Partner since 1954, providing customized compounded medication in their on-site lab, nutritional supplements and a knowledgeable staff. Hopkinton Drug, believing food, exercise and community along with an integrative approach to medicine can help you achieve your wellness goals.
Okay, good evening. I call the meeting to order for the Select Board for June 7th, 2022. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely using the video conference platform Zoom. All members participating in the meeting are present in the room. The public has the option of attending in person here at Town Hall or via Zoom using the link posted in the meeting's agenda. This meeting is being recorded. And for our first motion, I'm going to request a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to consider strategy with respect to negotiations relative to non-union employees, town manager, fire chief, police chief, and then collective bargaining relative to the DPW, police, fire and library unions. Because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. For the second purpose, to approve executive session minutes. Third, to allow Norma Camallo and Elaine Lazarus to participate in the executive session. And fourth, to reconvene an open session at the conclusion of executives.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this has to be a roll call vote because it's for executive? No.
No, executive session is always a roll call vote.
An executive session.
To go into one.
To go into one after the roll call?
It does have to be a roll call vote? Okay, so, all right, Marianne Jo.
If I hear you, yes.
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 Amy Ritter-Busch, yes.
Let us know, we're ready? Okay. Okay, welcome everyone. The Select Board is now reconvening in open session and the first order. I call the meeting to order and our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And now is the time where we have our public forum. So please note that each person will have up to two minutes to speak at public forum. Please start by stating your name and address. We'll start with people that are present in the meeting room and then we'll go to people on Zoom. So is there anyone present in the meeting room who would like to speak at public forum? Nope? Is there anyone on Zoom with the hand raised? Okay. Okay, so now we move to the consent agenda. The board will consider approving the consent agenda consisting of accepting a $100 gift to the ambulance fund from Don Dobrowski, a $100 gift from the MRP project to the library, to approve the street name Emerald Drive for the new street in the Connolly Farm subdivision off Hayden Row, and to accept the resignation of Sue Pearson from the Council on Aging. She was an associate member.
Second.
Okay. An aye in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just with thanks for service.
Yeah. Thank you to everyone for the donations and also to Sue for serving on the Council on Aging. All right, so our next item is a public. Let's see, are we at the right time for the public hearing?
No, we're early.
Public hearing is at 6:45, so we can move ahead to... Is the common victor list the public hearing? I'm sick, it's not. So we're going to skip ahead to the flammable license, from this flammable license application to the common victor license and entertainment license application for Blue Square Pizza at 30 Main Street. And the board will consider issuing a common victor license and an entertainment license for a new restaurant at 30 Main Street. The restaurant will offer pickup, to-go and customer service, counter service, and the entertainment licenses for a radio during operating hours. And if licenses are issued, they will expire at the end of 2022 and would be incorporated into the annual renewal process that we do at the end of every year.
I have a question.
Yep.
Do they need an entertainment license for a radio? Just to listen to it while it's cooking?
TV as well.
Yeah. Really? Okay. Is that our bylaw or is that a bigger bylaw?
It's a state requirement.
Oh my goodness, of course it is.
Okay. So the first item was a presentation by the applicant. Is the applicant here tonight?
We're ahead of time, were they coming?
I believe they are scheduled to appear before the board, they are not here yet.
So should we skip ahead then?
Maybe this is unprecedented, you're way ahead.
All right, we still have six minutes. We have a parade permit application for the Wicked 5K, that's not a public hearing.
I think Alana's here.
Okay.
Let's do it.
So would you want to come forward and we'll go ahead with that?
We'll get you home early, Alana.
The board will consider approving a parade permit for the Hopkinton Center for the Arts for the Wicked 5K to be held on October 30th at 10:30 a.m. And we'll use the Loop Road and Center Trail. So we'll begin with the presentation by the applicant?
Do you guys have questions? With the annual 5K or...
With name and address.
Oh, sorry. Alana Cassidy, 19 Eastview Road.
So were there any comments by town staff?
I think everybody was fine with it.
Everybody is. Everybody's fine with it.
So do you want to just give a basic description of the 5K, where you're going?
The fundraiser for Hopkinton Center for the Arts, it's 5K, Loop Road, this is I think our fifth year now. And walking back and forth and getting all the cash afterwards and...
And pick up all the trash afterwards?
It's been very good and pretty self-contained, so we don't have to do it.
This is great. Now, do you want to, planning to do it annually going forward?
Yeah, we plan to do this here.
That would be good.
Okay. Was there, there was no staff report, right? Everyone agreed to?
We have not received any advance comments from the permitting team.
Okay. So did anyone else in the board have questions?
I'll make the motion.
No, I just, we should go. How often do you have, how many people come?
Well, hopefully for about a hundred and fifty. It really depends on the weather, right? How many people show up.
And you raise how much or you hope to raise how much?
Well, depending on sponsorship, we raised about $7,500.
Nice.
On the high side. Waiting years when we don't put as much into fundraising, $3,000. So between $3,000 and $7,500. But it's been really, it's been really good. This year, just so everyone knows, the HCA is going to try and do a whole wicked weekend. So this will just be one piece of it. The Cultural Council is also trying to do a public encouraging festival, Common, which we approved, and then, but the HCA is also going to have a whole weekend for festivities. So I'm glad you're familiar with what we're doing.
All right, I only have one more question, if that's okay through the chair. How do people support your runners so you can raise more money?
They can just, they can go in the Hopkinton Hop Art Center, for HCA, they can go outside, they just don't go directly through there.
Okay.
But it all goes directly through HCA for their programming.
Great, thank you so much.
So if there are no more questions?
I move to pro, the parade permit for the Wicked 5K on October 30th, 2022 at 10:30 a.m.
Second.
Aye in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I'll just stay here because I'm the next agenda, I am too.
So we have three minutes before the public hearing. I guess we can give it a try. Do you think it will take just three minutes? Okay. Okay, so representatives from the Cultural Council will describe to the board a proposal and process for creating a cultural district in Hopkinton. And so if the other two members could introduce themselves to the public.
I'm Laura Huber at 10 Allen Road. Amy Rose from College Street. Alana Cassidy, 19 Eastview Road, still here.
And I think, did you have some slides? There was some information in our packet, which is an asset map, but it's a list really, right? So do you want to tell us about what a cultural district is?
So I'll start with a little background. We're initiating the process of applying for a designation of a cultural district within Hopkinton. The goal is to turn around parts of culture that are designated walkable area. Cultural Districts, a big part of why we're created is just to give a local people the state. So Cultural Districts can apply for annual grants for up to $7,500 to support and benefit the goals of the district.
Sure, and I'll just give up a quick update of where we are in the process. Pretty lengthy, it can take anywhere from a few months to a few years, depending on how quickly we push it through. So so far, we had an initial meeting where we just had like an information session with the program manager at the State Cultural Council. And that was attended by the Cultural Council local members, members of the HCA, the Marathon Museum Committee and the Historical Committee. And there was basically an agreement of everyone to at least move forward to the next step. So we've submitted a letter of intent, which just opens the application process. And we've drafted a preliminary map of the orders of the cultural district and then the assets that go into the inquiry that make up the district. That's about where we are right now and then there's, you know, 10 more steps in the process. We will come back here at some point to ask for a resolution to formally submit the application. And there's a few other things we're going to do for that. And Amy was going to just talk quickly about the map and how it was developed.
Yeah, so as you heard before, on the map, the whole district has to be walkable, it also has to be accessible. So what we're hoping to think of this is very simply as on one end, we have what will be the Marathon Museum and then go down across Main Street, across the Common with all kinds of monuments and the Historic District with all kinds of interesting architecture, go hopefully over to the library if we can include that, and then down to the HCA. That's a fairly large district, so we're hoping to include it all. And it will help us a lot with that downtown corridor project to make that walkable and accessible. But there already is a way of walking from the HCA up behind the road, the Loop Road, behind Hopkins and onto Center Trail and onto Main Street. I'm not sure that that's entirely wheelchair accessible on that stone, crushed stone, but we'll have to look into that. At one point, there was a concern that there might have to be just within a one mile distance, but we don't believe that that's still true. So at least we'll exceed the one mile by a little bit. But we have, you know, we don't have a lot of artist studios, but we do have, we do have our own culture, the HCA, we have Marathon, Marathon Museum, and all things Marathon. We have a lot of really old, beautiful architecture, a lot of arts-related businesses, lots and lots of historic cemeteries and lots of events which we may or may not be able to include, some of the events that happen reliably every year. So we just, we really just wanted to bring this to the attention of the Select Board, just so everyone knows what we're doing and what we're trying to do as we go through it so that when we come to you in six months or wherever, we're beating up, like, do you do it? You know, we just want to make sure everyone's in the loop and we can really make a team effort to try and get, to get this district established.
Thanks.
And one of the next steps is we do have to have at least one open meeting for the town for anybody, you know, put in, input, ideas, questions, suggestions. After we do that, then we can come here and ask for a resolution.
Okay. And so I attended the informational meeting a few months ago, I think now, and so I know a lot about it, but just for the public's reference, it's in our packet is the list of potential assets, people can look through that. And unlike a historic district, this doesn't come with a lot of, any restrictions on your property, so I want to make sure people are aware of that. If their house is along this route, it doesn't mean they all of a sudden get restrictions. But it would bring, the funds would be like to have events downtown, I think, and you might have some signage and maybe a map or other assets like that, if I understood correctly. Does anyone else have questions or comments?
I'd like to share. So the district is just going to be for display of art or, I'm unclear on what, what we're actually doing in the district.
Yeah, it's really a way for the state to give us more funding for our arts that are already established. The HCA, hopefully the Marathon Museum can be included, that's, we're going to try really hard to get that included. I bet you're there because it's too far, but we're going to ship for it. And just, you know, maintaining sculptures, maintaining, I think we, I think it's relatively broad what we'll be able to use the funding for, but we will at least apply for funding, whether it's cleaning a sculpture or giving some, but it's a, it's a vehicle for us to apply to more funding through the state for our cultural projects, for our programs that are already here.
So is there a requirement though that if, let's say I do my own sculpture and I want to put it out there, is there a requirement that it has to go, be put up because it's in the district?
Like if you want to put the sculpture in the district that's already, that wants to be established?
We have a district and I have my own portrait and I want to post it. I want to make everybody look at me all the time.
I etch my face in stone and I want it out there.
What we have in our, our... I would assume there'd be, just like the historic district, I would assume, yeah, there'd be, you know, process to apply and say, oh, we love your marble head or...
A bit vain or fun.
Yeah, we need a partnership with multiple constituents from town that will actually manage the district. So I think things like that would all go for that community partnership.
Organization.
It's really why we can make up whatever criteria and programs we want to have. Like there's no requirement that anything has to change or be different.
No, we do have to change. We, we just have to come up with a list that, that, that's what the Cultural Council deems like, this is worthy of recognizing this as a cultural district. And I feel like we could get on this. We may actually have to add the Marathon Museum later, depending on when it comes online. So, so yes, we can do that. The idea is that it attracts more people to Hopkinton, to downtown Hopkinton, where they spend all their money, and it gives us a free advertising to do that, so.
Through the chair, this is a wonderful idea, I think this is going to promote a lot on the cultural side. Now, I know this is an FYI only today, are you going to work on kind of a governing principle and a framework in the next few months? When you come back, we can look at it and you'll probably want to do that before you.
Yeah, we actually have to do that as part of the application. So that, that will be a work in progress over the next few months as we gather more and more.
And I'm kind of imagining like what we have for the historic district, like you have a whole, you've got the Historical Council, the Society, and then you also have a Historic District, like you have two separate departments. And I'm sure there's a ton of overlap with the Cultural Council versus Cultural District, but I, well, yeah, that will be part of our next steps.
Okay. So I have a question.
When I, through the chair, when I got this preliminary asset map, I was very excited. I, I mean, I think what we really need is a brochure or a map or, or something that just says what the town is all about. And, um, I'm reading these, these things as it's, you know, outdoors and related businesses and historical and the cemeteries. And, I mean, we really could use something that just points out these things. Uh, and I think this, this is a wonderful start. I think it is great.
And one thing, uh, three, sorry. One thing, uh, we were talking about maybe during your, just QR code, like we had up for the mirror where someone could just take their phone and then click on a QR code and then be like, oh, look at this cemetery and learn about it.
So we have a public hearing coming up. Anyone else have comments?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. So you'll let us know when you have your big public forum and we can attend and send you questions. Okay.
And if anyone has other questions, feel free to, you know, any of us can go away too.
Awesome. Thanks for taking this initiative. This is awesome.
Okay. So now is the applicant here for the, um, can see the flammable license application? Flammable license? For Global Montello Group Corporation?
Global station?
No. So if they don't attend, should we have the, continue the hearing?
On Zoom?
Oh, they might be on Zoom? Okay. Okay. So can we liven up, Troy?
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you the representative from, from Global Montello?
No, um, I'm for Blue Square Pizza.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So we'll make it to you in just a second. Hold on.
Okay, no worries.
Okay. So if, if anyone else is on Zoom that is here for the Global Montello, uh, flammable license application, can you raise your hand? Oh, now Luke Di Stefano? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. You're here for the flammable license application? Okay. Okay. Call the public hearing to order. This hearing is being held in pursuit to an application submitted by Global Montello Group Incorporated for storage of flammable and combustible liquids pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 148, Section 13. The property is the formal mobile station on West Main Street near 495, 495, and is currently under construction. So we'll start with a presentation by the applicant. And I think there was some information in our packet as well.
We're treaty making for record in 70 with more in the hearing here, yeah, on the panel. Uh, back to this, global license application. And global's currently looking to, what? 54,000 gallons of total underground storage, 40,000 gallons of gas, 12 gallons of fuel. The site is an existing gas and fuel station today. Uh, current license, 40,000 gallons, uh, but does not have, uh, options for diesel, which is why we're seeking a new license for request of the town manager, even though I currently would be the station that we rebuilt and all these gain 40,000 gallons of store because we were asking diesel and actually ownership. But the town thought it would be a good idea to get a new license versus a, then we made a lot. Didn't you want to destroy it?
What's that? Yeah, I listened.
Can we mute, can we mute Troy? Okay.
And with that, what do we have? The entry report?
Okay. And do we have a staff report?
I didn't see a staff report.
The, the application has been reviewed, uh, through the town manager's office as well as the fire chief's office. We felt and concluded that it was best, uh, in terms of protecting public safety, to bring in a new application so that we can regularize both the existing as well as, as well as what was being proposed. So we are recommending approval as applied for.
And now, uh, do board members have any questions? I'll start with Marjorie.
Actually, I, actually I don't know about the, the tanks in, in this application. Um, I only was looking at the plan for the, the project. And I saw that on, on Elm Street they had an entrance and an egress, and on the main street, entrance and egress. And my thought popped into my head to save the problems that we have across the street, uh, could we just make the Elm Street the egress and, and the, um, off of the main street, the entrance? And, because when you come out on Elm Street, boom, you're right there at the light and you can continue to go. And it would eliminate the same problems that we have across the street. And it's a thought that popped up and I just want to mention it. Thank you.
Through the chair, I think that was dealt with, uh, at the planning board stage, uh, the egress and.
Well, I don't know. The plan I saw had both on both, which is just what we had across the street.
Muriel might remember more detail.
Yeah. My, my understanding is that the plan presented, um, though, yes, clearly is an application for the flammable liquids, uh, tanks, the side drawings, yeah, the side drawings submitted comply with the plan that was approved by the planning board.
My memory from the planning board was that, um, that there will be a no left turn exiting the parking lot during peak hours. I think that was part of the planning board conditions.
Yeah.
I think it said one entrance, right? I don't think it said both, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. The, the challenge is that the application that is currently before the.
It's not for that, I understand.
Is not for the.
But just for the public's information.
Yeah.
And for the applicant to know that it's been problematic in their section, even more so recently.
Yeah.
Um, so, Raffin, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm all set. It's just about storing the flammable liquids underground.
Yep.
And just, just to ask for a clarifying point, the, the storage of the underground liquids, that was all part of the process too? Because I don't, I don't remember, um, if this is a change to what was permitted? No. Is it? Okay. Thank you.
So you?
Yeah, through the chair. Just in general, this is pretty standard, right? Do you see any exceptions that we should be aware of in this, um, process or the request? No, this is pretty standard. Thank you.
Okay. And so now we'll ask for comments from the public. Is there anyone here in person that would like to make a, have a question or comment for the applicant? And is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a question or comment? Okay. I'm not seeing anyone. So I would, I think, accept a motion to vote to close the public hearing?
So would. Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any more discussion?
Um, yes. Just a, does, does the fire chief look at these flammable liquid storage tanks? And this is all something that you've, and you've given the AOK with it? All right.
Okay. So then we will be ready for a motion and.
Um, Madam Chair, I move to approve a license.
Okay. As listed in the application?
As listed in the application, yes.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, Ripstein? Okay. Okay. So I think the public hearing is all set. And then next is the common victorial license and entertainment license. Is the applicant from Blue Square Pizza here?
There's him.
You are? Okay. Great. Okay. So the board will consider issuing a common victorial license and an entertainment license for Blue Square Pizza, a new restaurant at 30 Main Street. The restaurant will offer pickup to go and counter service. The entertainment license is for having a radio during operating hours. If the licenses are issued, they will expire at the end of 2022 and will be incorporated into the board's annual license renewal process at the end of the year. So we'll start with, with a presentation by the applicant.
Yes, I, this is, this is Troy Sroll from 548 River Beach Boulevard in Riverdale. Um, so the, the proposal is for a sourdough pizza real called Blue Square Pizza. Uh, it's going to feature Detroit style and New York style pizza options. And it, there'll be a few salads and, and a wing on the menu as well. It's really, really pizza focused and, um, that's kind of what, what, uh, proposal here.
Okay. And then, um, was there a staff report?
In, in fact, just in general terms, uh, we would like to welcome the applicant to the community. Uh, we are always looking for opportunities to fill vacancies, uh, along Main Street. Uh, with much gratitude to the owner of the property. Um, they were able to find a new business to occupy that space sooner rather than later. So welcome to the community.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Now, are there any questions from board members? We can start with Marjorie.
I don't know. I don't have any.
Okay.
It's good.
Um, we'll be seeking, uh, through the chair, uh, will you be seeking a, an alcohol license in the future?
Uh, no, I will not.
So this is just strictly pizza? And, uh, is there dine-in service?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's counter service. So, you know, we won't have service, um, but there, there will be about 20 seats inside.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, I don't have any questions, but, uh, we, we, I'll echo the town manager. We welcome you with open arms and, uh, we can't wait to try out your restaurant. So good luck.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. Happy to be here.
Thank you. And you?
I had a question. Do you only make square pizzas or are you going to round?
No, I, I, I offer New York style round pies as well, like city crispy.
Awesome. Yeah. Can't wait. And welcome to Hopkin.
Thank you.
Okay. And this is not a public hearing, so I think we can just finish our deliberations and then make a motion.
Do you need a motion for what?
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the common victorial license and entertainment license, which will expire on December 31st, 2022. So we had a motion.
From town manager.
And then we need a second.
Uh, I'll second that. Um, I do have just a little, uh, quick question. Sorry, I didn't ask it earlier. What are the hours?
Uh, so initial hours are 4:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, and 12:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. on Sunday.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Ripstein? Okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome to the community, Troy.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Now we have some new employee introductions. So Chief Mueller is going to introduce, uh, Gary Doherty Jr., who is the fire department's new deputy fire chief.
Just a second. Isn't everybody going to come on, crowd on in? Come on down.
Yeah, come on in.
Your dad standing in the hallway.
This is a big moment here.
Okay. So.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I'd like to take this time to, uh, introduce, uh, Deputy Doherty. Um, Gary's been with Hopkin Fire for, um, almost 20 years, a little less than 20 years. He's got over 22 years in the fire service, um, with six years in the military and the air force as a firefighter. Um, Gary came to us in 2004. Uh, in 2005, he obtained his, uh, paramedic. He was one of our first medics that we put through, uh, an in-house program that the department had sponsored. Uh, in 2011, Gary was promoted to lieutenant. And, uh, in 2021, he obtained his, uh, MPA, uh, through Anta Maria College. So I'm here tonight to, uh, introduce, uh, the new deputy fire chief for the town of Hopkin Town.
Okay. So board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I want to say welcome to Hopkin Town. You really don't look a lot like your dad, but.
So, uh, through the chair.
Yeah.
We got you in 2004. And it's taken you this long? What happened? Welcome to, welcome. I'm, I'm really excited to have you, board.
Um, yeah, no, thank you, through the chair. So first, um, I would say that you have amazing shoes to fill. I remember when your dad really stepped up for this town, not just as fire chief, but when this town really needed somebody to step on, up in an emergency situation. So it's pretty, pretty amazing to have you both here in the room. Um, I do have a question because I like to ask a question. I like to give people an opportunity to get to know you a little bit better. And I know that you, you folks are out in the community, but, um, what are you looking forward to, um, in terms of this leadership opportunity? What is it, what does leadership mean to you and what does it mean to you to have this chance?
I think, uh, the way the Hopkin Fire Department is growing over the past few years, um, we've had a lot of retirements. Um, I figured that about 67% of our department is going to have less than 10 years on the job pretty soon. So I just look forward to like leading these new kids and, uh, training them how I've grown up. And hopefully they come to learn, love the community like I have over the past couple of years. That's what I'd like to instill.
Great. Um, I noticed that we have things in common, by the way. I got my start at Quinn Segaman Community College as well. So hurrah. Um, but, uh, but good for you. I also grew up in Paxton, so it was interesting to read through your resume and see the ways our path and, uh, and the air force as well. So, um, I really appreciate, uh, your dedication to this town, your long service to this town. And I look forward to the ways, um, exactly as you just said, the ways you will set, um, and hold a, a standard for, um, the younger folks coming up and build the department in the way that we're all going to want to see it grow.
So you?
Through the chair. Well, thank you for your service and again, continuing. Um, looking forward to it. In, in general, along the same lines, uh, to kind of capture your thoughts from your experience and your discussions with the fire chief and others, what do you see as the biggest challenge you might be facing and how do you go about it?
I think one of our biggest challenges is actually going to be hands-on experience. Um, we have two excellent fire prevention guys that have done an excellent job. Fires are down. So it's giving these younger generation, uh, the experience that they need. Um, what we would learn in a couple of years is taking them years. So I look forward to trying to build like a, help build a training program to expedite that.
Thank you. Love to see you in action. Thank you.
Through the chair. I, uh, I think it's wonderful that we're getting Doherty back again. And I just wanted to say to you how, how much we appreciated your father, not only as fire chief, but he took over as town manager, uh, interim town manager before we hired Mr. Kamaloff. And he did an, an excellent job at that too. And you might look a little more like him if you grow a mustache.
And I was just going to note in your resume, it looks like you ran the Upton Board of Selectmen for three years. So you've been on both sides of the table. Yeah. And.
Take all the stresses that you have.
And I guess as a resident, I'm just wondering, are there any little things that, that we residents do that drive you crazy? I know we need to replace our smoke detector batteries that we constantly forget, but are there other little things that we need to be doing as citizens?
We like to be out there and interacting. So.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much. And, okay. So welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Oh, yes, of course. Connor?
These people want to take pictures though. Yeah. Can we all, you want to all get up?
Yeah.
Should we all, right?
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge or form the duties incumbent upon you as deputy fire chief for the town of Hopkinton in accordance to the Charter and Bylaws of the Town of Hopkinton and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? Congratulations.
Yeah, I can give a nice picture of the select board?
About the, what we do, the flag there, but.
Mr. Kamaloff and his friend, that are easy. Wait, can you take it like for now?
Okay.
appointment of Robin Goldberg as the new volunteer coordinator at the senior center, and Carmen Cisuentes as a per diem to the full-time dispatcher in the communications department. Okay, so Norman, you're going to give an introduction?
Yes, thank you, we will start off with Robin Goldberg. Welcome to the town. Robin, in fact, will be working under the direction of the senior services director, who will be our volunteer coordinator if the board has an appointment. Her experience includes working for the law office of Christine D. Anthony in Notre for three years, several volunteer roles, which is exactly what interests our heart in me, we volunteered for the annual memorial race, the Hopkins Public Schools, is also the community center, as well as the event chair, as well as volunteer coordinator, we are a teacher, we're a preschool teacher. We will, we will advise that you have the ability to work at any pace. You are described as warm, engaging, empathetic, calm, and reassuring. And the, as we finally included Emmy Beck, Jessica Minollet, Lisa Denim, and Christine Merrill.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Robin? No?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Robin, I'm at the senior central law, in case you haven't noticed already, and this is a great job, Sue Stewart did it before you, so you've got some pretty good shoes to fill there. She did a wonderful job, I was a volunteer there for a while, so scheduling, and it's not, it's not a simple job, it's not an easy job, so we welcome you on board, thank you.
So I see you're coming from a domestic relations law firm, I think that's, that was actually the first job I took, and I couldn't take it. So to see that you actually survived for three years, that tells me that you have a lot of patience and ability to, to deal with people in difficult situations, so really happy to have you aboard.
Yeah, thank you, so we really, we really value and appreciate our seniors in community, and I guess I just want to give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about why this job appeals to you and what you hope to accomplish and what you're looking forward to working with the seniors.
Sure, so, as I said, I was working for an attorney, and she was sworn in as a judge, which is why she had to close her practice. And I kind of took the time at that point to think about what I wanted to do next, and thinking about what I've done in the past professionally and personally. When I saw the posting for the volunteer coordinator, it kind of like took all my experiences. In high school, I volunteered with seniors and I loved it. While the kids were in school, I volunteered through the schools, I was involved in an organization where I was on the board and all different kinds of committees there, as well as running a road race, which in that case, I had a lot of volunteers that I had to coordinate. Volunteers are the backbone for anything. I know a lot of organizations, daily events, weekly events, monthly events, yearly events cannot happen without the volunteers, and I know how important it is to have volunteers participating. I'm excited to be a small part of that, and just to help, I know the asset that the senior center is to the community, and how important it is to the community, and just learning how many volunteers, there are a hundred and twenty during the year, a hundred and sixty in the summer, that's a lot of volunteers, and I'm really excited to be working with people who want to be there, because you don't volunteer unless you want to be a part of something. And to me, that makes it even more special that these people want to be a part of it, and I'm just excited to be a small part of that.
So you know?
Through the chair, you have a wonderful background, and thanks for your interest in joining, it's great to have you. Welcome aboard.
I don't really have anything to add, just that, you know, we're a growing town, we have more and more seniors needing activities and volunteers, so thank you, welcome aboard.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to confirm the town manager's appointment of Robin Goldberg, volunteer coordinator for the senior center.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, rep steam? Okay. And now, Norman, you want to introduce Carmen?
In fact, I do not see Carmen here, unless she's online, she may be at work.
Oh. Okay, well, do you want to just tell us a little bit about her?
Yes, in, in fact, Carmen represents a very beautiful story about the journey of some of our communications employees. She has been working for us per diem, done an excellent job, shown a strong commitment to this community, and proved to us that she can work under pressure. When the opportunity came up for a full-time dispatcher, she raised her hand and said she really likes her work and wants to be a full-time dispatcher, and that's why she's here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I don't have to say, her resume and background was in the packet, if anyone is curious, but, okay.
The only motion through the chair I'd like to say is that she is bilingual in Spanish, and I think for a dispatcher today, that's a very good thing to have. Anyone else?
Any other questions or comments?
Nope. I move to confirm the town manager's appointment of Carmen Cisuentes, or Cisuentes.
As a full-time dispatcher?
A full-time employee.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, rep steam? So welcome to Carmen. Okay, next we have general obligation borrowing, the treasurer collector will present to the board for approval, five million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and one in bond anticipation notes, and four million, eight hundred and eighty-one, five forty-three for a long-term general obligation borrowing. So Chris?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here tonight to recommend your approval on two borrowings. The first is for five million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and two dollars, and is in support of a long-term general obligation bond for five capital projects in support of the school, fire, police, and facilities departments. These projects were approved at the 2019 and 2021 town meetings, excuse me, and approved in May of '21 as a debt exclusion, and then these were initially issued last year as a bond anticipation note, and we are rolling these now into a long-term debt obligation. The resulting funds will finance a ladder truck for the fire department, roof replacements for the police station, as well as the Hopkins and middle schools, an HVAC upgrade for the schools, and a municipal parking lot right down there on 2535 Main Street. Second borrowing will be for four million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, in support of five capital projects for Parks and Recreation, School, Water, Sewer, and the Facilities Departments. These were approved at the 2018, 2019, and 2022 town meetings, and these borrowings will be issued in the form of municipal bond anticipation notes, also known as bands. In our current market, issuing bands ahead of a future long-term bond will help us forecast total true cost of what the project could be, and also helps, helps us to adjust for any possible cost increases such as supply chain issues like we saw with the Marathon School at town meeting this year. Funds resulting from the band will finance underwater main, Hayden Row, at Hayden Row Street, continued work on the Main Street water project, study, study regarding the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, and the replacement of air handling units at the middle and high schools, and finally also the replacement of the turf field at Fruit Street. The details in line mine format are on your memo if you want to see those. In response to our offerings, we received multiple bids from qualified investors, and I selected the low bidders. For the bands, that was Fidelity Capital Markets with an effective interest rate of 1.729 percent, and the bonds was from Stone X Financial, Inc., at a rate of 3.149 percent. These rates are a little bit higher than our previous borrowings, but they are indicative of where the market is right now in terms of interest rates, and they reflect essentially the best a town can get with the AAA municipal bond rating, which we were just able to reaffirm last month with standard insurance. So the language of the motion to complete the borrowing is on enclosure three of the memo titled Vote of the Select Board. If approved, the bond documents will need physical signatures of at least three board members, and the vote itself, which I just mentioned, Madam Chair, you will need to sign that as the clerk of the select board.
Okay.
If you vote to approve these borrowings, the documents have been prepared for you, and location flag that you need to be signed, we do have a tight timeframe, so if you are able to sign these tonight, I will have them at the door tomorrow, and next week, the town will have 10 million new dollars.
Okay, so do any, is there any comment from the town manager?
Yes, in fact, the CFO, the town manager, have reviewed the documents and we are recommending approval.
Okay, and do any board members have questions or comments?
Yes, through the chair, could you explain the difference between bond and the band?
Yes, so it's just short-term versus long-term, so a bond anticipation note is going to be issued for one year, one year principal interest, and then typically what will happen if we do feel like we want to keep moving forward with these projects, they'll get rolled into a long-term obligation. The terms of those are dependent on the project itself, so like a new building would be for thirty years, any vehicle would be for five years.
So the, excuse me, so the band, because it's short-term, that's why we're getting a lower interest rate on it?
Exactly, yeah, there's less, there's less inflation risk there because it's only one year out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Through the chair. No?
Just a quick question, so definitely the market is not the best for borrowing, but we got the best because of our AAA ratings, which is great.
Yeah, and you know, it's not, it's not that bad compared, compared historically, it's bad compared to what we saw during COVID when rates were still low.
We've been, yeah, getting good ones.
A little spoiled.
The question I had was, if we are to reissue, how costly would that be? Would it be a good idea two years, five years from now?
Do you mean to, how, like how expensive is it to roll?
Right, to kind of refinance at that time.
Yeah, you know, it adds an additional transaction cost when we do do that, and it's something we're thinking about when we're deciding if we want to do it long-term or short-term. Me personally, my opinion has been just that we've seen a number of things come in over cost, and then we've also just seen some projects that we might, we might consider backing off of until, until it made more sense in terms of supply chain issues.
At some point you may want to consolidate and get.
Oh, for sure, yeah, and so next year, next year these will be, assuming we want to keep doing these projects next year, they'll be rolled into a long-term borrowing, and we'll be having a very similar discussion in one year.
Thank you.
Mary Jo, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Yeah?
No, I just, so the, these different projects are sort of reimbursed or paid for through different departments, is that right, like the enterprise funds or so forth, or are these all town funds, even though they happen to be water and sewer?
Yep, so the, so the water and sewers will fall in.
Oh, all right, it's just all in the same?
Yeah, they're able to issue them all together.
Thank you.
Okay, and so the motion is very long, do we need to read the whole thing out, or we can say as written in the agenda?
Norman, I believe you've had them, read them all.
I don't think it's written on the agenda.
Yes, in, in the past, because it's a borrowing, we want to play safe, and we recommend to the board to read the entire motion.
Okay.
Okay. I will respond to the motion.
All right, I move that the sale of the four million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 bonds, unlimited tax of the town dated June 15, 2022 bonds, to Stone X Financial, Inc., at a price, at the price of five million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-one and fifty-four cents, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond should be payable on June 15 of the years, and in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2023, amount 290,000, interest rate 5 percent, sorry, yeah, in year 2024, 290,000, interest rate is 5 percent. 2025, 200, the amount is 290,000 at an interest rate of 5 percent. That, do I have to read them all out? Okay, 2026, 290,000, 5 percent, 2027, 290,000, 5 percent, 2028, 285,000 at 5 percent, 2029, 280,000 at 5 percent, 2030, 275,000 at 5 percent, 2031, 275,000 at 5 percent, 2032, 270,000 at 5 percent, 2033, 270,000 at 4 percent, 2024, sorry, 2034, 270,000 at 4 percent, 2035, 270,000 at 4 percent, 2036, 270,000 at 4 percent, 2037, 190,000 at 4 percent, 2038, 170,000 at 3 and 1/2 percent, and 2040, 340,000 at 3 and 1/2 percent, and at 2042, 340,000 at 6 point, oh, sorry, 3.625 percent. Further voted that the bonds maturing on June 15, 2040, and June 15, 2042, each a term bond, shall be subject to the mandatory redemption or mature as follows. The term bond due in June 15, 2040, in the year 2039, 170,000, in the year 2040, 170,000. Term bond due June 15, 2042, in year 2041, it's 170,000, in 2042, it's 170,000. Further voted to approve the sale of four million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-three, did I get that right? Forty-three dollars at 2 and 1/8 percent general obligation bond anticipation note of the town dated June 15, 2022, and payable June 15, 2023, the note, to capital, Fidelity Capital Markets, which is a division of National Financial Services LLC, at par, and accrued interest, if any, at plus a premium of 19,330 and 91 cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 25, 2022, and a final official statement dated June 1, 2022, the official statements, each in such forms as may be approved by the town treasurer be hereby and are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. I really don't like hearing myself talk this much, but we got to keep going. Further voted.
There's more.
That the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of the notice and sale of the preliminary official statement dated May 25, 2022, and the official, final official statement dated June 1, 2022, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be hereby are ratified, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant event disclosure undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12, in such forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertakings shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further noted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes, and to comply with the relevant security laws. Further voted that any security certificates or documents relating to the bonds and the notes collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an, as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same. the same document. Delivery of the executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electric, electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as the original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined, may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken.
I don't believe you have to actually.
I don't think I have to go to that far.
No, I have, that's just for the clerk.
Second. Happy to help.
And then to you to roll over, just to be, we don't want to have to read that again. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed or abstained? No? Okay. And would you like us to sign those now while we're here?
You can do them after the meeting and leave them in the lane.
After the meeting, okay.
If you want, that's totally fine. Thank you for your time and your arrangement.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, and so next we're going to have a permanent, an update from the permanent building committee on the center school reuse. So Dan McIntyre? And I think there were some slides.
Yes.
All right, so hopefully we can get those on the screen.
So good evening, Dan McIntyre, chair of the permanent building committee. Are the slides coming up?
They are. We can see them, but you can't.
We can see them, can we not see them?
Okay.
But there we go.
There you go. Okay.
So at our, at our last update with the board of, of the select board, we talked about unconventional approach to delivering the center school project as compared to the traditional approach of designing or rehabbing buildings, getting costs for those, and then going to the taxpayer to get funding. We think the center school property, given its size and location, is a very valuable property for the town. And I think it is large enough to support the town needs as well as open up some of the property to private development. This would have benefits both economically and socially. Economically, it'll help offset some of the costs of the town needs. And it'd also bring more life into the downtown area, more people, more pedestrian-friendly area, and that roads, of course, are downtown revitalization. So to that end, we issued a request for interest to the development community, and we were pleasantly surprised with the responses we've got. We've got seven very interested respondents from that RFI, and three of them actually went to the, to the time and expense of submitting very detailed letters of interest on what they might do with that property. The predominant use that they're proposing is multifamily. It seems like a good fit. The towns consultants that we worked with were saying the same thing. There was some limited interest in commercial development down there as well, perhaps another restaurant or something on the, on the town common. But I think what we, what we received was enough to go to the next step of issuing a request for proposals, so we can get detailed proposals from these developers and then would have some real cost numbers to work with to see if this is as beneficial as we, as we hope. Next slide. These are just some possible arrangements of what might happen on the center school property. It's about 12 acres, really divided into two separate parcels, split by an ever-source piece of property that has, I believe, a gas line going through it. Up near the front, near the town common, is the existing 1928 building, which in these scenarios is being kept and restored. The 1950s and 1980s addition would be torn down and open up room for more office space and administrative space for the town needs, as well as private development for multifamily Next slide. So the permanent building committee is now working to develop a detailed request for proposals, and we're going to various boards to seek input on what that RFP should say. Specifically, there's, there's three things that we'd like to get input on from the board of selectmen, or the select board. Not quite into that yet.
Hope it's of merit.
First is for multifamily in that, in that zone. It's zoned residential A right now, which is essentially single-family homes. We'd want to change that to multifamily, to a multifamily housing, and perhaps some commercial development down there as well, depending on how the RFP comes in. So that would require either a zoning change, kind of a spot zoning for that property, or a local initiative program, kind of like the friendly 40B type of thing. So we're looking for input on what, what the town would like to see, whether they'd want to just do like a spot zoning change or a local initiative program. The second thing we're seeking input on is the prioritization of the needs. The center school reuse committee identified a number of needs throughout the town. Permanent building committee updated that recently, and those needs are still there. We've listed a few of them up there. Affordable housing, a youth, a community center, more parking, there's leave space for the trails that are going to happen in the center, center of town. Municipal office space to alleviate some of the crowding in this building. More meeting space. Parks and Rec was a, was a big proponent of using the center school property to meet its needs. And then record storage. So we're looking for input on prioritization of those needs, whether we want to try to do all of those on the center school, or whether we want to try to spread those out around town. For example, Parks and Rec, the gym down there is, is very important to them. They do a lot of programs at that gym. But is the gymnasium the best use for, for the downtown area? Should we put that over to Fruit Street, for example, and consolidate Parks and Rec there rather than up at center school? And finally, we're looking at, for input on how to structure the RFP, whether we would want to just sell the property to a developer and lease back the land for, that we would use for our needs, or whether we would want to keep the property and enter into some sort of long-term lease with a developer to develop portions of that property. And there may be other scenarios of how to structure that. I think we need to work with town council on how to do that and stay within the procurement laws. But we thought that the board of, select board may have some input on how they might want to dispose of that land or keep that land.
Okay.
And then finally, next steps is, as part of the RFP process, we need to get a property appraisal, we need a good property survey. Those two things are in the works now to get that done. We're seeking board input. Tonight is the first step of that. Later this month, we're going to planning board and historic commission to seek their input. We also want to talk to the affordable housing trust and the open space committee about trails. Once we assemble the RFP into a decent form, we want to disseminate that to the public and get some public outreach. So we're looking at open houses, H cam, social media, to try to secure some public input on this as well. And then once we have the RFP in a good draft form, we'd like to come back to the select board and get your sign off on it.
Okay.
So with that, I'll, I'll take questions.
Madam Chair, do you want to start?
There's so many different designs. It's hard to put your finger on, on what you would really like to see. The facade of the old building, I, I think I like the idea of that remaining. Some of these just seem to be so much more, how much more traffic can we take? How much more parking will we need? That just, it, you know, it's downtown. It's congested as it is. I don't want to see it too much more congested. And then as I looked at some of these, these plans, a lot of these options were for buildings, single buildings, buildings with second floors. There was one option with apartments. And my only thing to say that is if you want seniors in there, you're going to want one floor apartments.
Sure.
You don't, you're not going to have everything on two floors. And even, even down at Legacy, I went down and looked at the apartments, but they didn't have any elevators.
Really?
Yeah, so there's no seniors going up to the second and third floors. And those are things that I'm really interested in seeing developed. If we're going to develop that area, I'd like to see some of the town hall move over there. I would like, I would like to see, yes, some parking, but I would like to see senior housing that seniors can actually live in and just as, as a part of the project, not necessarily all of the project. And I can even see some commercial development, particularly if it's little market or little stores or something that people who live around there can go to, because there isn't anything anymore downtown since a lot was left that you can pick up a loaf of bread or, you know.
That's, that's what one of the developers thought, too. It would be a good location, kind of like an anchor of the downtown strip, where we could have a little convenience store or something like that.
So I guess tho, those are, those are things that I would, I would be interested in seeing developed into the project.
And in the letters of interest, I think most of the developers were thinking over 55 development, but I don't, I don't know if that's senior or not, is it?
Well, no, in the assessing business, I, as, as an assessor, I found in like Community of Waymouth, they built so many over 55s because they thought no kids, no schools, that they had to open it up to anybody. Because once, once you have enough over 55 units, then you're not allowed anymore. You have to open them up to families and everybody. So you just have to be careful with how many 55s you might build in the town.
There are a lot of rules. There are a lot of rules.
Yeah, there are. Thank you. I need to take a moment.
I'll just recap before I go to the others. So you're looking for our feedback on the zoning implications that would have to happen, the prioritization of needs, and opinion on property disposition, I think, too, right? So, or how do you have anything?
So, yeah, I did. When it comes to the property disposition, can you tell us the advantages and disadvantages of sale and lease back? I mean, or keeping it and leasing out? I don't, it, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me that we would sell it and lease it back, but I want to be educated.
I, I think if the full sale of the property, I think would generate the most income to the town to offset our costs. I think, I think that's the one and probably the only advantage of doing that. But then, again, there are disadvantages because we lose that space forever. The town's going to continue to evolve and have new needs that we may have to address, and it's difficult to buy land. So there's a downside of selling the land.
Right.
On the, on the lease option, the developers were thinking that that's not advantageous to them, so we'd get less interest from the development community if we're going to do a lease. So there may be some happy medium where we keep some of the land under town ownership and sell some of the land.
That's kind of what I was just thinking, is maybe some kind of hybrid where we don't give up all our rights entirely.
Right.
But, and keep some of the land and.
Yeah. And it may be that when we get the results of the RFP, that we review them and say, this really isn't beneficial to the town at all. We just stick with the traditional approach.
Sure. And when we're talking about the town costs, I recall the significant amounts of asbestos in there that needed to be abated and all that. So the idea is that we would have the private developer come in and, and help clean all that out.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a bunch of questions.
Yeah, me too.
So just, just a comment first. I think going out to the RFP process before we have a pretty rigorous input from the public is probably the wrong order. That's just my starting, starting position.
What, what was that again, in question?
So I think public input has to happen before we put an RFP together and put it out. I think that's the step that has, many of us feel hasn't yet happened. Not your fault, Dan. I'm just saying that I think that this is a sea change for what we might do with that property. It's a, it's a substantial town asset and it's dead center in town. So I think that for me, it's going to be important to first get a rigorous input from the town to make sure that we're aiming in the right direction. When we're doing the.
Yeah, we, we are starting that approach, but the flip side of that is it's difficult to draw people's opinions out. Sometimes we want to present something to get reaction to, and then we get, then we get good opinions.
I, I still hold that public opinion before the, and we can disagree on that, but public opinion before the RFP goes out makes most sense to me.
Before the RFP goes out, absolutely.
Or before it's, before it's drafted, before it, it's shaped, right? So we want to know what people are thinking about this idea. As the property is being appraised and surveyed, is it being appraised and surveyed thinking it's going to be residential development?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thinking, we're trying to, we're talking with the appraiser about how to value it as the highest and best use. So not, not the current zoning, but what future zoning may be. And that, that's a difficult thing for the appraisers to do, but we're working with them to try to come up with that number.
Yeah, so I have, I have some concerns and issues about that approach as well because the appraiser's going to do the job that we ask them to do, and if we tell them to the highest and best use from a financial, straight financial question from somebody from out of town who does this for a living may be a bunch of residential units in there. But the town may feel that somewhere in there, there's a different balance, and maybe we don't want the financial highest use, but the best use is some, some other kind of, some other kind of use. So I think that we need to know a little bit more about that. I also have, oh, yeah.
On, on that question, the current thinking is that we have perhaps a cascading approach to the appraisal, where as we start off with the highest and best used based on the current zoning, the highest and best use based on what may be possible, given what we've heard so far. So clearly, the, the concern that you have will be addressed under the first layer of the appraisal process.
Yeah. And always in these equations, I'll just say this out loud, thing, open space uses and trail uses and things like that are never the highest and best use by those kinds of standards. And that may be something that this town values in that equation really heavily. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're understanding all the, all the values that we're going to consider, not just the dollar values. I also, I also have a concern about the spot zoning. As far as I'm concerned, that's something that I've always learned is not a thing that anybody recommends, and it's not even, I don't think particularly allowed? Question mark?
We agree on some things.
See, we agree on many things, Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah. In fact, if I'm also answer that question, I, I think the, the use of the term spot zoning was. Yeah, no, in, in fact, it's, I think we, we've been trying to find the best way of capturing, I think, what this town has done in the past. There is a clearly articulated planning process that results in some form of zoning. We have done this in East Hopkinton, was much a large scale, but in this case, yes, clearly we'll be looking at a much more narrower and confined area. Again, if we had a better term to use, we will not be using spot zoning. Again, if we had a better term to use, we will not be using spot zoning. We're simply acknowledging that the town has a plus practice in planning towards some zoning.
So I totally understand that, and I don't want to appear like completely resistant, but the reason spot zoning is problematic is that people live there, right? And people live all around there, and even people, in this case, even people who don't directly about that property, many of us, I live as far away as many people from the center of downtown, but I have an emotional connection to what the downtown looks like. So I think that there's a reason for the spot zoning to be like less amenable because people don't want things to, that are unexpected to drop in next to them, even if it's some, has some financial benefit for the town. So I just have some concerns about that approach, too. And I think that if you had broad public support, then I think that the local initiative, sort of quote-unquote friendly 40B, is a much more attractive opportunity. I think that's a bigger lift, although zoning is hard at town meeting, too. But I think it suggests the hard work has happened upfront to get residential buy-in for the approach, and it becomes an approach that's attractive to everybody. So I also wonder about ahead of sending out an RFP suggesting that we're interested in really moving forward, an impact study on our services. So all of those options direct the impact, the schools, the police, the fire, the DPW, and all town services. So, you know, a cost impact study and making sure that our financial needs and our growth needs are well taken care of and planned for going out. And I think that that has to happen before we send out an RFP that suggests we're really interested in plunking a bunch of multifamily homes somewhere, or even senior housing. I mean, any of these options might be attractive, but I don't know. Then, I'm glad I asked that question. I think the implications of selling or, and leasing back or maintaining the property is another thing that we have to understand more fully before we suggest that we're ready to have a big residential development in downtown. So there's, let's see. I think, oh, will the RFP process be open to all responders? There are some that you said, I think, earlier that some chose to wait, so it would be a situation that was open for everybody?
Open for everybody.
Yeah, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure. And then the other question, I think this is the harder question. I know that we, we're a town that's really committed, and we have a solid percentage of affordable housing, and I'm sure that this is part of the thinking for this property. But there's another sort of the intermediate kind of housing, sort of, and I don't know if there's a label for it or whatever, but housing that, you know, people can, I know it's been called attainable housing in other communities, where maybe our teachers and our firefighters and our police officers and our kids could afford to move back into Hopkinton, right? So like a broader expanse of types of housing that was, that invited that level of ability. I don't know if that's even possible, so.
It's...
I'm sorry, I have a question through the chair. This property, we talked about the land. The land belongs to the town. The old building belongs to the town. That's going to be rehabbed. But all of these new buildings, who will be responsible for them? Who will rent them? Who will sell them? The builder is going to own them?
That's...
The town won't have any say into how...
It would be private development that develops the housing part of it.
So that will be privately sold and privately, the town won't have anything to say on it?
Oh, they don't have anything to say on it, but...
But they don't own it, so that makes...
We don't own it. Through the permitting and approval process, and really part of the RFP process, where we outline what we want there and what we don't want there, that's where we get our control.
So I just want to get back to that one particular question. If there's an opportunity in there to think about being, if it's going to be residential, being a little exceptionally creative about what that means?
Yeah, in fact, the current thinking in the housing sector is that there are three levels of housing that come into play. There are the traditional affordable units, and then there is the middle-income housing, but that still falls under some form of structure influenced by the community. And then, what is now emerging is what is commonly known as transitional housing, where we are seeing this coming into being in the community in many forms, where it could be a certain demographic that is transitioning from one type of housing to another and may not be looking for a long-term commitment to a property. There is also the transitional housing that may be tied to some of the issues that we're dealing with in the community, such as mental health and individuals who certainly define themselves unhoused. So there's a very broad approach to the concept of housing under consideration.
Okay. I think that that would be exceptionally interesting to put in front of the town. I would be interested in having that fuller conversation.
So I don't think we've heard from Shangyuan yet.
I just want to ask one last question. I just want to know, this is a different kind of circumstance. I want to know, and I have no idea if this is possible, if there's some sort of profit-sharing mechanism for something like this in this kind of partnership for the town?
Yeah, Dan, I can respond to that. At this point, we have a very open slate. As Dan indicated earlier, even going back to what kind of a transaction would capture the aspirations that we're hearing from the community currently unknown. Within that discussion of either the town continuing to own some portion of the parcel or the town renting, clearly, there will be opportunities to find ways to express profit-sharing. It could not, it may not necessarily be dollar-for-dollar, but it may be access to certain services. For example, is, I think we've done in a couple instances, 26.2 Foundation, where part of the discussion was that there will be programming that will account for those who are disadvantaged in the community, addressing the issue of equity, equal access to a facility. It may also be if the decision is to continue some gym at this site or developing a different community center or gym at Foot Street, there could be an assurance that there will be guaranteed access to specific town programming for our youth. So we are working on a very open, clean slate, and all ideas are most welcome.
I so appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Were you done, Mary Jo, or should I go to you?
No, I just, this is, it's not a municipal, it's not going to be a missed project, but it's done on municipal land. When the RFP goes out, I want them to understand that because of that, state of Massachusetts is going to require that they hire union laborers in Massachusetts.
I'm sure that's the case. There's no way to get around the prevailing wage. Whatever we do is going to get a full review by town council to make sure that it meets the letter of the law.
Okay. So, Daniel, do you have some questions or comments?
I have two comments and then a couple of questions. So I think this is very timely, so thank you for doing all the work and bringing it here, because when we were in appropriations, we do incur almost quarter million, I think 150 to 250K every year just to maintain that facility, which, you know, is bleeding some, I mean, good amount of money. If you look at it five years, seven years, it adds up to millions. So I hope we get to move forward in a reasonable timeline to start resolving this. So thank you for the work. Now, in terms of the content, I think this is very, you know, a lot of good, interesting options and discussions, and I agree with what Muriel said. I think engaging the town residents and getting their feedback in a positive mechanism would be definitely something we want to look at. Now, the whole proposal, the value proposition, the way I see it, is kind of two phases. One is that in terms of the decisioning, is it going to be public completely? Is it going to be public-private partnership? Or is it going to be fully private? So if there is, you know, some sort of scenario analysis or views that we, or options that we can see in those contexts, that'll be the first line of kind of decisioning or thinking across. Then for each of those, we want to also see the options that you have or we have here are mostly on the private area, right? So we want to then weigh in, if we had to go in each path, what does it mean for the next level of options? And in terms of understanding those options, a lot of the good information we have here, I think my feedback would be, it would be good to understand the economic impact because we're looking at economic opportunity, right? And which is great. I'm really excited about it. So what exactly does it mean? It means that, you know, we are going to spend some, invest some, we're going to gain some, and overall, there is tangible economic outcome, and then there is intangible outcome through, you know, the prosperity of the area, the new business that it may bring in, and all the good quality people that are going to join, all those good things. And there are ways to qualitatively and quantitatively understand that. So that'll be one important aspect. And then the other is, what is the impact of it, both economic and environmental-wise? In terms of the traffics congestion, or in terms of our school and various resources, service levels, police, fire, DPW, and streets, what is the impact going to be? And I'm sure, you know, those are maybe too detailed in the onset, but we want to keep those on the radar as part of our decisioning process.
Absolutely, they have to be. And you're right, it may be difficult to do that now, but as part of an RFP, we have to include evaluation criteria. And part of the evaluation criteria is going to be, you know, the economics, the impacts on services, traffic, all those things will be part of our evaluation criteria to determine which proposal is the best, or perhaps none of them are good enough. Issuing an RFP does not commit the town to actually doing this, but we just want to evaluate whether this is a good thing for the town or not, because the alternative of going the conventional route is a very expensive alternative, and there's not a whole lot of people out there that want to see the taxes raised for an office building, for example. So it's going to be a very hard sell at town meeting if we don't at least explore other options for saving the taxpayers' money.
Great, great, thank you. And one last item on that. For the RFP, I think all these are good additions, and we may also want to think some of these, especially the first phase of options, the public usage or public-private collaboration, those may need more work on our side, meaning on the town side and the committees for us to chip in. So something to think about, but thank you.
I don't know if we can keep the RFP kind of broad in that respect. Is that a possibility?
I think as a reminder, we recently went to town meeting and appropriated funding to make sure that in designing the RFP, we explicitly account for the town's needs. So there is a commitment, supported by town meeting, to invest in making sure that the town's aspirations and needs are reflected strongly in the RFP. So your input is very valuable in that regard. And also, as a reminder, based on, I think, what Dan just said, the reason why we're here is because there's a recommendation that was put forth to the select board regarding the future use of the property. And the select board said, before accepting that recommendation, they needed the permanent building committee to look into the feasibility of implementing that recommendation, and that's why we're doing this work.
Thank you to everyone else. I agree with most of the things that have been said. I have a few other notes. So for your list of committees that you're going to go visit, I think it would be important to talk to the school committee or maybe just meet with the superintendent about the implications on students, because there's a lot of units proposed in some of the RFIs that we've received, I think 15 to 100 or so, and that's a lot. Let's see, and I agree that the impact study would be very important for any of these uses. And then, I know you said it would be really hard to pass, like a $20 million project at town meeting to build offices, yet it's really hard to get zoning changed. You need a two-thirds vote. And I don't think anybody envisioned having 100 housing units behind the center school. So I'm not sure that could pass town meeting either, but if you get the public feedback that it will, that's another story. So I was kind of curious if, I guess nobody had submitted them for any more quiet daytime uses. I know that would need a zoning change, too, but like medical offices or, there's an old boot factory on Hayden Road that is very quiet, like warehousing, and Kidsborough was there, and people seem to, neighbors seem to like that because it's...
Do you?
They do stuff in the day, but then it's quiet at night.
Yep.
Not a ton of traffic. So I wondered about that. And then I think if you do need to go to town meeting to get a zoning change to allow all those housing uses, the public's really going to want to know that their needs are being met, like if they're getting the type of housing that we don't have enough of affordable, or like Mary Jo said, if it's senior housing, it needs to have an elevator so that people can, so it's accessible. The youth community center, I still see as a big need, and I would think that really fits better downtown so that people can get to it from the schools easily. Let's see. Yeah, and the municipal office space and meeting space is still a need, but that could probably fit in to the front parcel. So I think those are, I think those are all my thoughts, and I look forward to you coming to the historic district commission.
We'll be there.
And you just, on your list of committees you're going to visit, it says historic commission, but I would recommend both the historical commission and the district commission, and they could maybe do a joint meeting for that, I think. All right, are we, any other feedback for Dan? We know we gave you a lot of feedback.
Thank you very much, Dan. We've given you nothing to do.
We appreciate it, because we're struggling with a lot of the same things we heard tonight of what to do. That's why we wanted to come back here and try to get some more input from you, and I appreciate it.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think once we get the RFPs out, that should kind of give us more clarity as what we're really looking at, right?
It should.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
We do have the RFIs. Those were not really firm, but that were the Norman Sanatras, I think.
Yeah, in fact, we have the RFI that was put out by the town, and the responses posted on the website under the permanent building committee.
That would be great. And, oh, there's a small note I'm going to add, because this is coming on the tails of, the principal planner came and presented to us that we're going to have to zone the area near the train station for high-density residential housing, up to 900 units right there. And like, it's going to be a really hard sell to also add 100 units downtown if you're, if we already have to add 900, it's tougher, so just keep that in mind.
Well, he did approach us that maybe this site might be potential use for that, but it didn't sound like any of the sites in Hopkinton were really suited for that particular use.
Yeah. So if this could be used to meet some of that goal, then that would be maybe easier to get it through.
But it had to be within...
I don't think anybody wants to really overcrowd that area because it's a residential area. But we want to at least explore the opportunity there.
Yep. Understood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The idea was that it had to be in a certain proximity to the train station.
It does, but I think he talked about asking for a waiver for could some of the units be downtown.
Okay.
But he didn't seem hopeful that that would be allowed. Okay, next is the Upper Charles Trail Committee update. So if Upper Charles Trail Committee members would like to come forward. And I believe they also have a slideshow.
Yes, we do. Do you have a computer? Oh, okay.
I see some of them are on the Zoom, so if they want to be, if they want to chime in later, they could after the presentation.
Okay, well, good evening, and thank you for inviting us. I'd like to congratulate first Mr. Mahan and Ms. LaFreniere for being elected a short time ago. My name is Jane Moran, and I'm chair of the Upper Charles Trail Committee, and to my right is one of our members, Sin Estimer. right is one of our members, Sin Estimer, and another one in the audience, Bill Snyder. So, next slide, please. So, I am here today, or tonight, to provide you with an update on what we have accomplished, what we hope to do next, and to answer any questions that you might have. Here is an outline for tonight's meeting. Next slide. As you know, the select board has given the Upper Charles Trail Committee the charge to create two or more trail routes for the Upper Charles Trail from Ashland to Milford, a trail that will extend almost eight miles. We will continue to coordinate an approach for our public outreach and the development of a more robust trail website. Our planning process is intended to gather as much input from our residents through visioning workshops, conducting focus groups, and surveys. We will conduct public education and outreach by seeking input from such groups as Parks and Rec, the school community, the planning board, veterans, senior citizens, the Chamber of Commerce, and continue to work with all the trails committee and open space, as well as many others. Next slide. In this flow chart, we show that in 2015, we consulted with the Conway School, who were directed to create a trail from Milford to the town of Ashland. They were asked to show two or more alternative routes. Using this data, we analyzed the various choices. As time went on, some alternative routes were eliminated for one reason or another. One example was the suggested path of following the original rail trail path. Over time, much of this section became unavailable as individual houses were built on the rail bed. However, we continued to gather data, then analyze this information, and at the same time, we engage in the public using various tools. How do we do this? By yearly reviewing all of our objectives for the previous year, and then consider objectives for the year, or possibly two. Then we set reasonable time, reasonable goals to achieve these objectives. We applied for Mass Trails money in 2017, and again in 2021, to do preliminary design and engineering studies. In 2020, we were awarded a Mass Trails grant to prepare preliminary engineering design plans for Segment Five, which we refer to as the school campus connector, and that connects the center trail through our Main Street Downtown District, all the way through Hayden Row at the EMC Park entrance. Although we have conducted public outreach from as early as 2015, over the past two years, our public outreach process began again in earnest over the spring and the summer. Then, on December eighth, 2021, we presented a public meeting, all in the effort to get feedback from the community. Then, on April thirteenth, 2022, we held a public workshop to allow the public to brainstorm with us on alternative alignment options. For this meeting, there were over four hundred invitations hand-delivered by our committee members. We held this public workshop to allow the public to brainstorm again on the alignment Next slide, please. So as you can see in this chart, that we are working simultaneously in multiple levels as we continue to work through our goals. One major accomplishment this past year was to complete a draft ENF notification form, that stands for Environmental Notification Form, ENF, for the select board's review and approval. The intent of the ENF is to show the potential environmental impacts for the path as a whole. There are eleven segments, beginning in the town of Ashland at the Hopkinton State Park, continuing through Hopkinton, and ending in Milford. The ENF will advise the state officials that we are constructing the path using these segments, and each will have independent utility and connectivity. We are doing this to show that we are not segmenting the project to avoid any environmental permitting steps. The ENF is needed where certain thresholds are exceeded, or when seeking state and federal funding for construction, or if there is state permit action. All of this information in detail can be found on our website. Next slide. As I close, I would like to invite all of the, to come to our next public meetings and workshops, or please come and visit us at our regular Wednesday meet, Wednesday night meetings, the first and the third of each month. So as you can see, this process is long and arduous. However, we are confident that by continuing to strategize, gather public input, and set reasonable goals, this trail will be built to the high expectations that our citizens have come to expect. And finally, I would like to thank our entire team, starting with Norman and Elaine at the town manager's office, our town engineer, David Del Torio, our project engineer from VHB Engineering, Matt Chase, our project consultant specialist, Michelle Murdock, and finally, I would like to thank all of our committee members on the Upper Charles Trail Committee, who work so diligently and so hard. So thank you to all of you. And now I'll entertain comments and answer questions from the board.
Okay, thank you. And Mary Jo, would you like to start?
Give me a minute. Let somebody else go first. A lot to say, yes, dear.
What would you like to add?
Okay, so, thank, first of all, thank you. And Jane, I know that you have been working on this for a long time. So I thank you for, and your committee members for service over time as well. This is a, this is a really big undertaking, and it is arduous to put the pieces together, for sure, I know it is. So, so I wonder, more globally, where the focus, I know that you had been looking at that connecting piece along Hayden Row, and then the alternative behind it, Charles View, is that still the piece you're looking at, or are you looking at a different piece for this year? Because I know you ran into some challenges there, or what's, what's, what's the next piece of the trail, and what, what needs to happen for that?
Okay, so, as you, as I mentioned, there are eleven different segments to this plan. Many, many of them are still being studied and under consideration. Some have already been, out of necessity, been completed, for instance, the downtown The piece that you speak of on Hayden Row has been put on hold, because we, the feedback we got from the community is that they would like more information exactly on where the right-of-way is on Hayden Row.
Sure.
It's our belief that the town owns this land, but without a full, and survey, we just don't know where the inches are, and where the, you know, the more footing might be. We also anticipate that there might have to be some straightening of Hayden Row, but until the survey is complete, we just do not know. And that could take up to six months or longer for the, the town to complete that work. So we're waiting for the town to do that. In the meantime, a unique opportunity was afforded to the town in that the trails groups could apply for a half a million dollar grant. So we took the unique approach and used the alignments that we had already planned and designed. And one of the alignments is the first alignment, and that's from Hopkinton State Park, most likely all the way down to the Marathon Museum. So we, if we are fortunate enough to get that money, that money would go into engineering studies, to, as a, not a pre-feasibility study, but we would have to study exactly and find out what the next steps could be before we applied for more funding for further design. The other part of that is, and this was exciting, because we filed jointly with the TCMC, and I'm sure you're familiar with that acronym, Trails Coordination and Management Committee. And we had, in our ENF map that we had proposed, we have, well, it wasn't the ENF map, we used that as the basis, but we also overlaid all of the different alignments from the very beginning that we have collected. The Conway Group, and the one that I mentioned going through the old rail bed going through Hayden Row, that had to be eliminated. But even though many of those had to be eliminated for practicality reasons, we had one alignment that went from the back of the ball field, Field Nine, I believe it is, all the way down through, almost running parallel to the other, the center trail, but on a more western side, that the TCMC has planned to use their share of this money, if we're fortunate enough to get it, to plan, design, and build that piece. I think, I think it's one and a half miles. And that would exit onto Main Street in the area of the Golden Pond.
Okay.
So that's quite exciting. So that's a long-winded answer, but the answer is, the Hayden Row piece is on hold, because we are waiting for the town to do more study on that, and a survey particularly. And so we have shifted our work to the Hopkinton State End Park, all the way down to the Marathon Museum.
Okay, well, that is exciting, and I should, should probably say too, it's great to see the two groups working in concert, too, because everybody in this town values and loves trails, and.
We all love our trails.
I know. And it's, it's also, it's also sort of astonishing to me, or it's hard when, when it gets controversial, or it gets difficult, when people are just trying to, everybody's trying to aim in the right, same direction, and, and put in more trails and so forth, so I appreciate that. So it's the town who is surveying, can you explain the process for Hayden Row?
Yeah, put simple, we have had several discussions regarding Hayden Row, including public safety along the schools, and most recently, the questions that came up through the, the trail process. So we took a step back and said, where exactly is the right-of-way? And that's, that's, that's what we're doing, and we're going to do that through the engineering and DPW offices.
Okay, and that's due to be done over the spring and summer, or?
I believe.
I believe they're going to start right away, but it is quite lengthy process, and it won't be complete for a while.
These old roads, they're center lines, and the right-of-ways can be very.
It's quite detailed work.
Yeah, and it can be challenging, it can be a big surprise. The roads aren't necessarily built to the center line.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate this.
You're welcome.
Sure, through the chair. Hi, Jane, how you doing?
Good evening.
So I do want to thank you for all your hard work as liaison, and seeing what you have been going through, it's, it's a very heavy lift, and you've been doing a great job with it.
Thank you.
When it comes to, one thing I just wanted to kind of, kind of open up a little bit, is the ENF piece. So when we file the environmental notification form, that is for the entire project, right?
Yes.
So, but when we do that, we also have to present alternatives, there's an alternatives analysis aspect to that, right? So has that, we've had a number of different paths, those all get presented in the ENF form, right?
No, I don't believe so.
I can answer the question, if I may, through the chair. This was, in fact, a tactical decision on the town's part.
Mm-hmm.
Number one, we wanted to begin some conversation with state agencies, and the ENF became the way to begin that conversation. There's nothing definitive that we're putting forth. And then the second tactical objective was to get a sense from the state officials how they would respond to the fact that this project has different segments, and may have a totally different alignment by the end of the process. We wanted to have a better understanding of, one, from a compliance viewpoint, will they agree to the fact that we have different phases?
Mm-hmm.
And then secondly, see if they would think alongside, together with us creatively, around how we will articulate the total impact of the project, when in fact the alignment is not known.
Hmm.
So that in itself, for me, tactically ties us back to goal number one. And then the third piece was also, begin to get a good sense as to what might be the requirements by state agencies if we were to request state funding for this project. So purely tactical, nothing definitive, and the good thing is, we got the blessing from the state one, we now have specific officials that said, that we can discuss this project with. And number two, they did agree that our approach, given the, the extent of the project, would encompass both the individual segments, won't be considered segmentation, and at the same time, we could start, as we continue these discussions with the community, thinking about the total alignment. And then thirdly, it, it did put us one foot into the T process.
Mm-hmm.
So that was the tactical approach, and that's why we're mentioning the ENF process.
Excellent. The other thing I wanted to just kind of comment on is the, the idea of a whole trail network, which is a vision of mine, that I think would be incredible, if we can have, you know, a main spur, you know, the main, main trunk line going through, and then have the various spurs connect various aspects of the town, and I think that's a grand vision. I know that's something that you've been aiming for, and I just want to commend you for that.
Well, thank you for acknowledging that, that's been important to us from the beginning.
Thank you. My point.
It's an, it's, it's an avenue to become all-inclusive for all of our neighborhoods and draw them in, pull everybody together.
Excellent.
Okay. Angela?
Well, I just, I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing, and I love the idea of a trail through the state park out to the Western Nurseries. And I have seen, I've had a few ideas of my own, of course, everybody has, and I've been to some of your meetings over at the library, and, boy, you have taken some flak from some people, and I feel bad about that. You've done a diligent job, and I'm glad to see now that people are finally getting involved in this. For a long time, we've tried to bring it forward, and people have not paid any attention to it back when, and all of a sudden, you had a public meeting, and it kind of blew up, so, but you have been doing some real good work all along, and I appreciate it, and I thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. And I just want to interject this piece. I know a lot of people have looked at it negatively, but I always looked at the various conversations that have been taking place as a positive, in that it helped our townsfolk become more aware of the project. We couldn't have bought this publicity. And it's been, seriously, it's been, I for one have been very grateful for it, because this is how we make the best product happen possible.
Well, I wish you well.
Thank you.
Angela?
Thank you, Jane, and thank you for coming today, and all the good work that you have done. I mean, it's a very complex and difficult task, of course, but very much needed. We all love our trails, we want to see this happen, we all are aligned with this vision, I think certainly. Now, and we totally appreciate, again, all the good work, the patience and the hard work, analysis and discussion that's going on. In general, I just have a few clarifying questions. In general, I just have a few clarifying questions to understand the path forward. One is that the fund that you're asking, or we are asking for state, from state, the scope is not fully defined yet. Is that correct? Like, we, or is it a particular option that we are going forward with, and these are the key items for the scope and the deliverable? I wasn't sure about.
Just this product, this latest grant that we're applying for? Two separate pieces, one would be for the upper Charles, the other half would be for the TCMC, and those are pretty much spelled out within the grant. What would we be using that money for, for each piece of it? Does that answer your question?
That does, and that follow-up question would be, for those scope and options, is there general agreement across the trail stakeholders and thought leaders who are How do you describe it? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to learn, as well as see where we can help from the select board leadership.
Oh, well, thank you. I believe from the very beginning, because this idea, the segment one, has been out there from the very beginning, well, not from the very beginning, but shortly, that was one of the first pieces we came up with. We just haven't moved on it yet, because we had other parcels that we wanted to get started, namely, the piece from the downtown corridor through the center trail and back of the school campus and across the street. In all of our feedback along the way, the Hopkinton State Park to East Main Street has always been attractive to most everybody. And I think, I can't speak for the, the TCMC, but I believe that this is what they're looking for as part of a, for a type of a trail that goes and connects the school to the area toward the restaurants and Dunkin' Donuts and some of the other bases in, headed toward the west part of town. I think that's a wonderful opportunity to get that much closer to being able to tie the east with the west.
No, thank you. And then the last one on this is, once we get the grant, how much flexibility we would have to adjust the scope if we need to at that time? Because you are still, you know, I know it's very complex, and thank you again for taking it on, but there's still feedback coming in, there's still thoughts that are brewing.
Absolutely. Part of this piece of the work, for instance, with the Hopkinton State Park to East Main Street, that would be design, that would be monies to be used for survey mostly, to get us down to that point. It would more definitively plan the exact route of where, or as closely as possible, where the various, where the trail could go. Then that becomes part of the whole again. We, that's just one phase. We can't go further for further engineering costs and design until we have this first piece, just as we did with the school campus connector. This was the first engineering study that we did there. Then we had to go back and apply for a second grant, correct, Norman, to get final engineering and studies. And in between, there's all kinds of conversations, there's further design work that's defined, where we have to go and what we have to do. We continue to reach out to the school community during that whole process, and to other people that would be potential buy-in for the, so there's, it's an ongoing, as you mentioned before, it's a very complicated process and plan that we follow.
Thank you. And my last, very last, is, in this complex, complicated process, and there's a lot of sensitivity, and we have heard and seen many heated debates, and I appreciate that it brought in new ideas and helps bring us together on more, be more passionate about something that we really care about. Now, given that, how from the select board going forward, do you think we could help or help the process better, or help as you are leading to support better?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. At some point in time, and we'll rely on our team, because we couldn't be doing all of this without our, our team, but we will be asking you to review the environmental notification form at some other point down the road, and we would appreciate your support at that point in time, so that we can continue our work forward, as Norman suggested, to make this thing possible. Because we can't, we can't get this whole thing done unless we bring the state in and find out how they're going to, what their expectations are for this project. Because it's still a long ways off, there's still a lot of work to do, and there's plenty of opportunity for the select board to help out as we go along together.
Thank you. Thank you for all the good work.
So I know a lot has already been said. I was just going to say, I'm really glad that you have partnered with the TCMC to get two segments that seem very valuable and are not controversial at this time, to get those forward now. I think those sound like really good ideas. And I'm happy to hear, too, that the Hayden Row segment is on hold, at least for the moment, because I really don't feel like there's public support for that option at this point. I know you're studying it more. And then I noticed in your overview, one of the bullets is, plan upper Charles trail and present two or three options to the select board, but then when I look at the next slide for the timeline, I don't see where that fits in, the two or three options.
I can answer that.
Okay.
The goal is to consolidate the input from the public workshops in a form that will articulate the two or three options.
Okay.
What my understanding is, there is preliminary information that was collected from the two workshops. From that information, there will be another meeting that will confirm to the public, this is what we heard, did we get this correctly? And then after that answer, there will be a professional, there'll be a professional depiction of what was heard in the form of several options. Those options will be taken back to public workshops, the public workshops will give the input, and resulting from that would be some plan that will be presented to the select board, articulating the two or three options.
Okay. I do think there's definitely, it would be a good idea to have another, I guess maybe presenting what you heard in this, in the fall, because the one in April, I tried to attend, but it was the same night as appropriations hearing, and it was five o'clock, I was driving home from work, and the virtual option really didn't work, you had to really be there, and I couldn't be there. So I really do think something in the fall, maybe once we get past the beginning of school in October, if you had a public forum, not at such a busy time of year, maybe that would be helpful. And then I really do think it is, it is just everyone's benefit that the Hayden Row part is on hold, so people can think about and discuss other options. And I know the schools, too, are, they're doing the elementary school building process for the Elmwood School, and they don't know quite where that will go, but it could also be off Hayden Row, and that might, that might change that option, too. So anyway, I think those are all my comments, and everyone else said a lot of things.
No, through the chair. I just wanted to say, I love the update, and you're working on so many different things, that as you make any progress at all, I would love it if you would just shoot a line to the board, or, or just virtually, or, or just something that lets us know that you are making progress and where you're at, and that way, it will also be public.
We'd love to do that, that's easy. Something easy.
This is really, really appreciated, and I also was not able to go to that forum. I did go to the, the public hearing, but, but honestly, that was sort of the first time I had really re-engaged with the process, so the public forum idea was a great idea, and if it happens again, I definitely would like to be able to participate.
We will be doing them.
Awesome.
Okay. That's it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night.
Very full agenda, we still have a couple mediators left here.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so next we have the preliminary discussion of the FY23 goals for the town manager, police chief, and fire chief. I think they are all here. Yep, they're all here, okay. Who is, DA Jopra?
Yeah, in, in fact, through the chair, Jessica Lawrence, from the HR office is here to walk the board through the process.
Awesome.
Welcome.
Walking us through the process, making notes, it's so similar.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I can set the context, if that's okay?
Please.
The, the idea is, again, to go back to the strategic goals that the select board set early this, late last year. Those goals were then translated to the budget process. We, we believe at this point that the board has also gone through your preliminary remarks in terms of how we performed last year, and thus, tonight, we're looking simply for general concepts as to what you would think our goals should be. The board is not deciding on the goals tonight, but simply indicating in very broad terms what the goals should be.
So to start, I think it could be helpful, because you all wrote draft goals in your self-evaluations, correct?
Yes, we did.
So maybe if you could, could you explain to the public what your draft goals were, and then we could, if we had something to add to it?
We didn't, sorry, we, we did not want to do that, because we didn't want to preempt the board's evaluation, that is not okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, here, the context being, board did set broad goals sometime towards the end of last year, those goals have been translated to the budget, meaning we now have resources to move forward those goals. It's the time to then say to the three senior leaders, here's what we think you might be working on.
Okay. So shall we start with one at a time, I guess, then?
Any process works for me.
Okay, so can we start with the fire chief? That's a little easier.
It's easier. I don't know if it's easier. I got a list of hard goals for you, chief.
What I have, I don't have all of them.
Okay, and so we don't want him to tell us what he wrote in his proposal?
No. Well, some people don't want him to tell us. It's totally fine.
Okay. So who would like, so who would like to begin on?
If you want me to start, I don't care.
If you have some, mind your own.
So I, I don't have hard and fast goals. I really want to know, I, I have some thoughts, but really, it's important to me personally, and I'm sure it's important to the other members on the board, that eventually, the goals are really, really support your vision and mission, and the development of your department and, and your people and yourself. So when I, when I think of broad community goals, I think of, you know, mental health awareness and, and ensuring that, that we become a community that really, I love the way that Mr. Camalo said this back in the day, a community that really cares about each other. I know that your department and the police department have been through an exceptionally challenging time with the COVID pandemic. It's not lost on anybody, that you are all out there doing, that everybody be doing their jobs. We know that, that we've been exceptionally well-served through that period, and I think that it's important to think about what you need to do that is, is restorative in terms of your department and your people, right? What is it, so I guess when I think about it, what is it you need from this community that moves your department forward? So that, that's my, my thought on a, on a very broad, not very specific goal.
So I have a bit more specific goals. So one would be the, the coordination on the, on the LNG facility, and, you know, response measures, and being able to, I know that the town manager is now main contact to the LNG facility, but to coordinate the responses on that. That was more verbose than it needed to be. Second thing would be, I know that Chief Slaman had been working on studies for satellite fire stations, so I think it would be to continue on that work and to see, you know, what the town's needs are going to be as we move forward. And those are my two biggies.
Good ones.
Well, thank you.
Mary Jo, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just, I want to commend you for one thing, because coming new and having COVID, and the fire department certainly stepped up, I got one of my shots from a firefighter, and it was delightful, I guess. But you've had the Main Street corridor to contend with, and you've had two marathons to contend with in one year, and, and you're new. You also short-staffed, I understand, in a couple of different places, administrator and deputy chief, and you really have stepped up to the plate to get the job done, and I very much appreciate that. And I can't wait to see what you can do when you're at full staff.
We're working on that.
We're expecting great things. Again, the, I know last week, we had the gentleman here that talked about refurbishing the station down in Woodville. I also want to see someone look into the, the small station concept of, you know, one or two vehicles in a small place, in a couple of places in town. They don't have to be big at all, and I, I think that that's something. I like to see the fire department in the news, only not with the fire, with some of the other things that you're doing, and I, I just, I think that for a brand-new chief, you've done a marvelous job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saydul?
Chair, through the chair. Thank you again for your service and all the wonderful work, and again, coming in new at a time like this wasn't easy, for sure. And in terms of goals, I think two things I want to put on the front. One is that, generally speaking, I think the great work that you and your department does, and you know, and have shared time to time, the various metrics that kind of defines the service levels. So if we can start to kind of formalize, or it's, you're the expert, so it's your pick, formalize the metrics that you want to define what the service levels should be measured at, have a general, and actually, specific, clear understanding, is it the response time? Is it, you know, number of issues resolved, all those, right, good things? And then create a baseline, so we can understand where we are at any point in time, and how we can measure the improvements going forward, of course. We want to make sure, A, we don't fall below that baseline, and B, we can then be more targeted, that, you know, how we can work together to improve those service levels. And second one would be the second fire station, how can we get a, I appreciate all the good work and for sharing that in the last meeting, how can we have a more comprehensive option analysis and plan for that?
So I think I'll probably just reiterate other points. I do think, like you came to present to us a couple weeks ago about the, because of the growth, we have a need for potentially a new, you know, satellite fire station, and so I guess, so I guess that goal would be to meet the needs of the growth of the town, so that you have, you have enough staff, and you have enough vehicles, and enough, and you can reach people in time. And then the mental health needs are very important, like it's been a sad couple of years, and I know you guys are also paramedics, and probably have had to deal with sad situations that, so make sure you're taking time for your own mental health, as well as, as you respond to the community. And then the LNG facility, of course, is very important, that we are prepared for that, so I think that's, repeating what everyone said. That's all I've got.
Can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I want to make sure that the conversation includes what, what you know is, is the greater priorities for your department, too, so don't want this to be, I don't want it to be, and I know nobody does a one-sided conversation, really what, what marries all the goals and focuses, but really brings your department forward.
If I may, would the board consider taking item 15B out of order? If I may, would the board consider taking item 15B out of order? We have visitors who have been with us all night, and if we can get to the Bay Path and...
Sure.
Sure, yeah.
And I have to buy the two chiefs lunch tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Wait, where, where is Bay Path, I made you know? In the town manager's report?
Yes, it's in the town manager's report.
Okay.
The Bay Path Humane Society listed 65 Fruit Street.
Okay, so we'll jump ahead to the town manager's report to discuss Bay Path?
Yes, yes. I'm respectfully requesting the board to authorize the town manager to sign the lease that has been negotiated between the town and Bay Path Humane Society of Hopkinton. The, following a town meeting vote, we did issue an RFP, to which the, the Bay Path Humane Society responded and provided the most advantageous response. We, after that point, the Select Board asked us to negotiate a lease, which we've been negotiating for a very long time, and I'm happy to say that I believe we have agreed on the draft that was presented and included in your pocket. It basically is based on a 50-year term, the annual rent will be $1, provided they continue the service of housing animals that come through our animal control division, alternatively, $3,600 if that relationship is discontinued. They've also agreed to a draft pilot, through which they will be paying $2,000 to compensate the town for town services, police, fire, and so forth. Bay Path will also pay personal property taxes, which is something that we've, the board has really emphasized when we negotiated either a chief or a pilot. They have provided the insurances and indemnifications as prescribed by our insurance provider, Maya. And also, finally, given the wonderful relationship we have with Bay Path, they are our partner in making sure that animals are treated humanly, and in line with our equity goals, that they will not, they will comply with any and all discrimination laws.
And so for the, I was going to say, for the public, this will be at 66 Fruit Street, so the Fruit Street land that we own, and I guess from, I don't know where Parcellade is, but is, has access to utilities and water and everything that they'll need?
Yes, well, I mean, there'll have to be some construction if we do, but we'll be able to talk with that.
Come on.
Could you come up to the mic?
No, if the public can't hear you unless you're up at the microphone, that's the only reason.
Well, also, I think it's, if we're talking about your lease, I think it's a shame for you to be out back there. Now, step into the hot seat.
Okay, so you'll be able to access the utilities and services that you need from your site with a little construction. Okay.
We've had a, we've had a site engineer do a walkthrough with us early on in the process to confirm that.
Okay. And then, does anyone else on the board have questions about this?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
So we're basically continuing our, continuing our existing relationship.
Yes, yes, now with an opportunity to crack them access to town land on which they will build, I think you've seen it in the pocket, a very beautiful facility.
Through the chair, just a comment, a big fan of all the work that you do, so thank you for doing the good work and being in our town. We're certainly happy and proud to have you. And what I would encourage is, if there are any other opportunity for collaboration or support that the town can provide, and that is certainly, you know, beneficial to our residents, that's beneficial to all of us, we'd be happy to have that conversation. Thank you for that.
Through the chair, I just want to thank Bay Path, and they do need more room, and you do need a new facility. I got my new best friend from Bay Path just before COVID hit, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful. In fact, I think people from here have seen his tail go across the screen in various things. Anyway, Mac is, Mac is a real part of the family, and taking care of animals is really an essential part of being a person, being a human being, and how we take care of our animals is as important as, well, not as our people, but it's right up there, and I think Hopkinton is blessed to have a facility like Bay Path here, and I enjoyed the furball very much. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't have any further questions. I think we discussed this at a town meeting. So we need a motion to approve the lease of Parcellade at 66 Fruit Street for Bay Path?
So move.
As described?
I was going to say, I moved to approve the pilot agreement between the Town of Hopkinton and Bay Path Humane Society of Hopkinton, Inc., and authorize the town manager to execute the ground lease for the Bay Path Humane Society.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything you do.
We really appreciate the partnership.
Okay, so next, we'll have the police chief come up. And hopefully everyone had a chance to read the self-assessment, and does anyone have any suggested goals for this coming year?
So I'll go again with my really not very helpful, broad statement. So it just, it seems the right time, I know that the pandemic isn't fully behind us, but it seems the right time to thank the departments that, that really held everything together, and frankly, didn't miss a beat, even when it was difficult and dangerous to be out in the public, and most of us were able to stay home and, and work from home. And I know that for the police department in particular, there are other dynamics at play with the political discourse that were also very challenging. So I think that truly, it's a time to thank you and your department, but also reflect on the ways that, that we want to make sure that as a town, we're reciprocating, we're taking care of the departments that we value so highly. So it's not a specific goal, it's a thought to infuse into your thinking for your goals, if it's possible, that there's a way that we can really strengthen our relationships and make sure that all departments know that we're really pulling form, the way that you all pulled for us when we were safe at home and you guys weren't, so.
Through the chair, thank you, Muriel, and that is the forefront of my thought right now, is care for the staff, knowing what they've been through. Thank you. So as far as goals go, to be a little more on the specific side, one of the, I think, I think the mental health, and I think this is what Muriel was really touching on, but to put it a little more succinctly, mental health for the department and for you, chief, it's been a stressful time, and I think that some self-assessment in, in, in mental health and well-being is, I think, something that should be a goal for, you know, for yourself, for your deputies, and for all officers. We've lost a number of employees, and I think employee retention would be another one that we want to be looking at, as to, really, just like, you know, an evaluation of why, and what we can do to retain.
Okay, Mayor George?
Officers.
Well, I was looking at the objectives from last year, and I am glad to say that actually, all of them seem to have been achieved. Increased community interaction, and you are everywhere now, I'm glad to say, even on your time off. The media platforms, department website, in-person attendance at events and at meetings, it's just, you've done a great job accomplishing that. Again, thank you for the COVID vaccine I got on the other side, fire and police, so I do appreciate them, everybody stepping up to the plate on that particular issue. And the community risk reduction plan, is that completed? I know you and the fire chief and, and Mr. Camallo were working on it.
Sure, there's been great progress in it. There's regular meetings to review the caseload, and really, it's, the fire department has moved it so far along, I wouldn't want to take even an equal share of it. Fire Department, Mr. Camallo, and Youth and Family Services have moved that miles. It would be wrong for me to try to take, our department to try to take any kind of equal share, so kudos to them.
That's all I can say, is that I think you've done a good job, the chair, thank you.
Through the chair, thank you.
Through the chair, thank you, chief, again, for your service and your department's wonderful work. We definitely commend that and appreciate all the good work, hard work that you have put together. And it's also very nice to see your smiling face in jail and civil dress in all the events. I think that makes a difference in community communication and also building that harmony together. We are all in it together, so I appreciate that. In terms of goals, I have a few thoughts, and I, being new, I think, don't know what, exactly how the formulation would be, we don't want to overburden, but generally speaking, I think the one that I mentioned to fire chief would also be something I would be interested in, that how can we define the service levels of your department and make it, you know, measurable, visible, transparent? You have all those in various forms, and I have seen those, those are very helpful, but it would be good to have that in a kind of consolidated framework fashion, and then baseline it, and then help us communicate across those metrics or those qualitative measures in some ways, that where do we stand, how great we have been, and how we can continue that greatness. The second one would be along the lines of retention. There's been, you know, some concerns on various forums that we heard, and we just want to make sure that you are comfortable and setting your goals towards it. I know you do have it on the forefront of your mind. And also, make us all help you, how we can help you on that front, help the police department. It's certainly something we take very seriously, and we are with you along the way. And then the third one is, maybe it's part of the first one, but generally speaking, with all the atrocities and horrific things happening across the nation, we can't but think that how much prepared we are, and how can we always be on the alert to know that we are prepared? And I'm not an expert in that, so I leave it to you, how you want to set that, or how we, I'm sure we are very confident in your and the department's ability to handle this, but hope, God willing, none of that happens. But we want to make sure that we are on alert, and we are prepared, and we know that we are prepared. So some ways to set that up and reflect on that.
Through the chair, thank you, thank you all for your, your support. It is palpable, and I, and I feel it, and it means a lot to me and the troops. In this forum, it would, I would be remiss to not mention, since you brought up safety and preparedness, we, meaning town, the schools, police, fire, have a very robust response plan. In fact, this morning, we met with about 125 teachers at the school to discuss where we are, where we're going, and it was very well-received. And I just know that we are ready. There will not be, minutes will not tick away, we will address any threat to our schools, wherever they are, very quickly, and we stand ready. But that doesn't end it. We have work to do, and we're going to continue to work. We have already plans in the making for things we can do this summer to continue to bolster the program.
Thank you.
In fact, through the chair, we, we have a public announce, public announcement that will be going out shortly, that we all worked collaboratively on today, the schools, town hall, public safety, addressing that issue.
So we won't tell us, we have to wait for tomorrow?
In the middle, we threw in a range day.
Was it?
We threw in a firearms range day qualification, so, it was a busy day. Thank you, in all seriousness, for your support, and thank you.
So I'll add that I really appreciated the communication last week, because I know people were very stressed out about the preparations we were taking for school safety in Hopkinton, and that makes people feel better. I know, like, because I work at a school, and I, my kids have gone through the training, I know how prepared that Hopkinton is and most towns around here, and I was really just shocked how, that, you know, in equality, they seem to not have been prepared. And I even talked to my sister, who lives out of state, and she said she doesn't think her school is even to get trained in the ALICE protocol, and I was really shocked. I thought that was everywhere, because it's so prevalent here, but anyway, glad you reassured us. And then, let's see, so, and I would say, I really have noticed in the last year, a lot more community interaction from the police department and the communications being improved with the past year, so I feel like you guys have really worked on that, and I appreciate it. And I know you've been very short-staffed this year, so I hope that this year will value, we've got a lot of new employees, some time to take a break, but also, I guess, for a goal, I would suggest maybe the onboarding process and team building, to get, you got a lot of new people that don't know necessarily the existing staff, and we'll take some work to get some, um, team boarding, that onboarded group, I think.
Great.
Yeah. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just three, right? Just three.
Well, we'll narrow it down next time, right?
Well, yeah.
We can both, or combine them.
We all have, yeah, we all have.
And they'll have real jobs, and then, you know, this is aspirational goal.
Well, you'll notice I'm concise in my writing, in my speech. Thank you for the time and the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's see, and now town manager goals.
I don't want to go first.
What's it?
I don't want to go first this time.
Do you want to go first this time?
I got you, though.
I can go first if no one wants to. Well, I think the PFAS situation, you know, we've already voted on these things at town meeting, but the, the MWA, MWR connection process is going to be kind of a long project, so I think that should be an important goal, because people want to really get to a permanent PFAS solution. Also, with the presentation tonight, that Upper Trails Trail project, you know, it's hit some snags in the past year, so I think that's something that's getting some attention going forward, maybe when the Main Street project is done. I feel like they had, they had one more. Oh, the, I guess, this would be, I guess, joined with the town manager and the town moderator, but the improving of town meeting, I know you've already started by doing a survey, but I think some ongoing discussion this year on how we can improve town meeting attendance, I think would be great.
Should start paying people that, oh, wait, that's illegal.
What's it?
So I would just say, coordination with the, as, you know, as we're in the midst of the Main Street corridor project, kind of coordination with the engineering and maintaining the transparency, I think we'll be doing a great job, and I think, kind of seeing this to the end is, is one of the bigger ones. I think working with youth and community service for the mental health needs of the town is something that we should, you know, continue to focus on. Wouldn't say that we haven't done anything, we've actually done really well, but I think we should keep working on that. Those are my two biggies. I throw out two, I know, because we're going to get through eventually.
All right, Mayor George, you have some goal ideas?
Not right now, no.
Sayadul?
Through the chair, so we want you to solve all our problems.
I wanted to stay.
He already does.
Personal problems, too.
He already does.
Thank you for all the good work, and we are happy to have you and for the wonderful leadership. I think a few things that comes to my mind, I have been told, so I'll just repeat a couple. One is the PFAS, it's not directly related, but PFAS and MWR, both kind of water issue resolution, the broader perspective of it. One could be the analysis and tactical, and one would be strategic and executing on the MWR. Second one would be, you know, making sure the downtown corridor moves along on the right direction with the right execution oversight and timeline. So that, I think, is on everyone's mind, and part of it would be a little detail, if we can, is, you know, making sure the impact on the residents are addressed in an amicable way, in a, you know, more with better understanding and less, or least pain as much as possible. Some of it would be on a, by the way... Some of it would be unavoidable, understandable, but that would be also part of that, I think. And then the third one is economic development. How can we promote our business, promote our small business, help them get back on feet post-COVID era? And also promote post-downtown corridor overall with thoughts and support and some execution plan on the economic development front. So, I have many more, but I'll stop there for now.
We're only going to pick.
Many more, many more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, here I go again without a specific goal. So, I don't know how helpful this is, actually. But I would also, I would be remiss if I didn't say that in my year here, I have been so impressed with the quality of work that you do, the way that you build teamwork structure, and your foresight and sort of persistence, but not no-great persistence, to accomplish things, right? You have really developed an extraordinary team here. So, I guess, here's me with a non-helpful aspirational goal. I'd like to hear if there was a goal, you know, something that really interested you, challenged you, that is a little different than you've done before, but you want to try and do here for Hopkinton, a need you notice, and something that you find really interesting to work on? Just something that challenges you personally and professionally in the right ways.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're all set with.
No.
Oh, you didn't do yours.
I didn't do mine. I don't want no relief. That's one thing. None of us do. I really think that you don't get enough credit for all of the time and the effort you put in behind the scenes. I mean, just the negotiating with everybody, not just contract negotiation, and the schools, the departments, getting ready for Town Meeting. It's an amazing body of work, and I do appreciate that very, very much. I also think that coming up the PFAS and the way you and the town of us, everybody has come forward during the COVID crisis and done their part here at the Town Hall. It was really a difficult, difficult situation for everybody. And developing the plan with the Police Chief and the Fire Chief for the community risk reduction plan, I think, is just great. And I hope that that continues. I'd like to see it happen. Doing some negotiations with Eversource over the court cases and tax money, I think, was, you just, people just don't know what you do, and somehow we have to, we have to get it out there. And you just, you are doing things that we asked you to do. You're taking a little more time off, taking care of yourself a little bit. We are seeing you at more town functions that don't have anything to do with your job. And it's very nice to see you out there, and I think the public enjoys it. And I guess, I think you did a splendid job last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it? Thank you so much to the board. It's, it's, this time of the year, and if I can speak on behalf of my colleagues and Town Hall staff, it's one of the moments that we really enjoy. In our line of work, it's rare to receive feedback from the community as well as the posts that we work with. And the fact that here in Hopkinton, we have institutionalized these processes is something that we really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, were there other items in your Town Manager Report that we didn't get to yet?
Yeah. Beautiful celebration. The Boston Marathon Invitational Entry Program raised $390,065.58.
That's amazing.
That's awesome. That was with the 16, right? That was with the 16, Bebs?
With the 50.
Fifty, yeah.
Yes, the 50. And then, what, the story that doesn't get told is that there are other substantial nonprofits in town that do similar work and raise substantial amounts of money to benefit this community.
Fantastic.
And then we included the Main Street Corridor Project update from the Town Engineer and Michelle Meddock, these special projects. Officer.
Okay, I will say, I'm glad to hear you're going to be using the electronic signage, because it's going to be, the Main Street Project is going to take a much more disruptive course now after school gets out. So, I'm glad that you'll be using, I hope, all the resources for communication, including signage, that you can, and we're just going to all try to bear through it and have a beautiful downtown one more time.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I know this is going to take a little while to do our liaison assignments. Or was there anything else in the Town Manager?
I think that's it in the Town Manager Support. You can then now jump onto the Liaison Reports. And I think thankfully, the board didn't, you did your homework. You provided suggestions, and there may be just a few that the board needs to resolve.
Okay, so, for the Liaison Board invites, I don't know if we'll be able to see. I was thinking if Josh could project it. So, a lot of the committees have just one person interested in it, so that is great. That's easy. But we do have several that multiple people were interested in, and some that have no, nobody signed up for, so.
Can I ask a question before we start?
Yep.
There's a couple that I wonder if they're even still active.
Right, but they have not been dissolved, but they haven't been dissolved officially, right?
Well, is there, is that, there really a place for a liaison if there is no activity yet? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think that's valid.
Which ones are those specifically?
Like the Massbonnet Dam, right, and Pratt Farm Committee, right?
Pratt Farm, we're hoping that with the resolution of the PFAS question, we may resume some activity. Remember, we've, part of the thinking around that parcel was to begin a community agricultural project. We started that. We paused it because of the idea of developing a well. But now that we may not be proceeding with the well, we will restart that initiative. Elaine?
Okay, so where to begin here? So, for Appropriation Committee, both Shaijul and Norman said they'd be interested in being the liaison to that, right? And then the other ones under Finance, only one person.
Is it, are the ones that are the staff, are they set?
Or could you both do it, I guess?
Yeah, we, over the years, we've.
Both gone.
Yes, we'll do it together. That's fine.
And then, let's see, so, Fire, Police each have three people interested in, and School Committee has two people. There's Veteran Services, also, Shaijul and Norman on that one.
So, for School Committee, I can certainly let Shaijul take that one, and I can be removed from there.
Okay. And, so what about Fire and Police? We have, Mary Jo, Muriel, and Shaijul are all interested in those, but.
Little champagne for it?
If I may, Fire and Police, traditionally, it's been the Chair of the Select Board. The idea being, these are two positions that are appointed by the Select Board. However, over the years, the day-to-day work has been delegated to the Town Manager. So, it's important that the Town Manager continues to keep that line of communication open with the Chair of the Board. I know, yes, in the last year, there may have been a deviation from that practice.
So, no matter you get it, Amy gets it.
Can I ask a question, maybe? Can we go through it and then maybe revisit it to finalize it? Because there's a lot of moving pieces and openings. Do you think we can just go through the whole thing?
Sure.
And then maybe regroup on it next week, or next meeting?
I like the idea.
But I'm fine. I'm fine supporting that.
I think if all three of them were interested, it doesn't make sense for me to take it, to be honest, but.
It's going to cause controversy. Do you take it?
Okay, but, let's see, so, but then, so, let's highlight all the ones that have either two people or zero people. So, Appropriations, we agreed that it's fine if Shaijul and Norman both do that, right? Okay, and Orphan said that he would let, have Shaijul do the School Committee. He didn't mind giving that one up. Fire and Police.
I'm doing the, I'm fine doing the Regional Vokes School. I need to be connected to that, because I'm kind of, I'm not really connected to that, but I'm fine picking that up. That's one that has nobody.
KEATAC, KEATAC, and the School Reentry Group, is that necessary?
What is School Reentry?
It seems like that's not active anymore.
Yeah, that was the COVID thing.
Can we cross that off? Yeah. Okay, so, Muriel, you said you would take the KEATAC?
Yeah, I'm fine doing that.
Okay. So, that's that. Cemetery Commission had no one either.
Actually, I was a Cemetery Commissioner, and I would still be it. I don't know why I didn't check it off.
Okay, so, perfect.
I did the same thing down on the Marathon Committee. I meant to check off the Marathon Committee, and I checked off the BAA on the next page where Orphan has that. So, we'll leave Orphan, take me off of that.
Wait, sorry, hold on. So, let me, hold on, we're going to get down to Marathon. So, Council on Aging has no one.
Elaine has us. She's got us. She's not going to let you down.
Elaine has what?
She's taking notes.
Okay, Council on Aging, no one signed up for that one. And Veteran Services, both Shaijul and Norman signed up.
So, we left out Town Clerk and Personnel.
Norman has both of those.
Cemetery Commission, oh, can, Amy, if you picked up two, would you be interested in swapping out the Commissioner on disability?
I feel he was interested in that, but I might be able to qualify as someone with disability for being single-sided deaf. Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I could be a member that, not a Select Board Liaison, but an appointed member. But if, but if a whole bunch of other members in the community apply, which we don't know yet.
Right. Can we just leave it sort of open, maybe?
Sure.
Jamie, you can move me from Police and Fire, but I wanted to see, for Marathon, I'm the only one, so I'm.
I think Marathon is traditionally your job.
That's, yeah. I was on the Marathon Committee, and I checked BAA instead.
You checked off the wrong one.
Orphan on the BAA, so.
Council on Aging has no one, though.
I'm happy to take that one.
Okay, Muriel will take that one. Okay.
Marathon Fund didn't have anybody either. Did you not want to do that again?
Well, I had put my name down on other things, so I hadn't, I had only picked.
Yeah, I did, too.
But I'm fine, I'm fine picking up the Marathon Fund.
So, hold on, Veteran, wait, can I go through the list? So, Veteran Services.
Can I just say, as a veteran, I kind of really want to be on the Veteran Celebration.
But did you not put it down?
I did.
You don't want to be on it because you're a veteran?
I do want to be.
Oh, it's not on the list, so.
Yeah, that does.
Did I, am I looking at the wrong line? Okay, okay, so we'll switch, we'll remove Shaijul.
I took me, myself off that, Muriel and Norman.
BAA, do you want to be there? I'd like to be involved with some of the activities.
On the BAA.
Wait, so, hold on, we have, Marathon Committee has some, but Marathon Fund Committee, no one signed up for.
I said that I'd take it. I keep it. Muriel's been doing it.
Oh, I don't care, but I'm happy to pick it up.
I can pick it up.
Okay, so Marathon Fund Committee, Shaijul.
It's an easy one.
Wait, and then.
It's a lovely group.
So, Regular Marathon Committee, that was going to be.
Mary Jo.
Mary Jo, okay. So, I'm going to switch.
Oh, no, I was going to be the Marathon Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right, I finished the first page.
I'm just going to be Shaijul.
How about the.
Public Library?
The Library.
Oh, Library was both me and Shaijul. I'm, I'd be happy to give that one up, so.
You and Shaijul.
I mean, I like the Library, but I feel like I might have too many, so.
Can you, I can skip that.
Okay, so Shaijul will do the Library. All right, hold on, everyone, okay, perfect. Okay, now Parks and Recreation, okay, Shaijul picked that. Youth Commission, Muriel. Community Preservation Committee, Amy. Historic District, all three Historic Committees was just Amy. Sustainable Green, Mary Jo. Let's see, two people picked Trails, Muriel and Shaijul.
I'm just happy to do that, but I don't have to do that.
I am also happy to.
You know, we're going to want to find out where the numbers fall.
Yep.
Right, so, you know, so that.
Josh has been counting it for us.
Oh, wow!
So, right now.
Oh, real time.
Yeah, right now, Shaijul has 14. He's got two.
And I'm high next to. That's a lot.
I'm at seven.
I assume there would be.
Pick one up, don't I?
Yeah.
Put it that way, but.
Yeah, oh, no, that's the right way to start, yeah. So, why don't we have Muriel keep the Trails then? Does that make sense? Because Shaijul has too many at the moment, I think, right?
Yeah, I can be there if you want to.
Okay, and then.
But when you pull them out of, like, Fire and Police, that should drop them down.
But that's still over 10, right?
Uh, yeah, but, okay, so he's at 11 right now.
Did you subtract?
We're going to have to look at all the numbers at the end.
Oh, okay.
We're going to have to split it out and make sure that it's a little bit even.
Because right now, I'm a bit light at seven.
Oh, well, let's just give him all the rest.
Okay, so, Commissioner Trust Funds, Lake Massbonnet Dam, and Fruit Street, those are all Norman. And, like, those are probably, that's probably fine. They're not very active anywhere, right?
Another one, the School Athletic Field.
Subcommittee, is that still active?
Is it?
School Athletic Field Subcommittee. The Committee that is active is the one that is looking at the AstroTec Fields.
At the, at the high school or at Fruit Street?
At the high school.
Yes.
That would be the Hopkinton Schools Athletic Field Subcommittee, I'm assuming that's it.
But they already built those, right? Are they going to build more?
Well, they are, because they're looking at the maintenance and so forth.
Oh, I see.
So, I can take that one.
So, who will do, Orphan?
I'll take it.
Just all have. Last year, I think I had 10.
Yeah, Hopkinton Schools.
And the BAA, Mary Jo or Orphan, who?
Orphan.
Okay.
He's been doing it, so.
Okay, Elementary School Building Committee, Shaijul. So, Irvine Tadaro and Pratt Master Farm.
That's a real, there's a couple of big ones on your list there, Shaijul, which is awesome, but also a couple of really big liaison responsibilities, so.
But if he's doing School Committee, I think the Elementary.
Totally makes, totally makes sense, but those are both really big.
Correct. Whereas the School Committee, you would just have to check in with them periodically, or read the agenda or something. Okay, let's see, Irvine Tadaro and Pratt Farm are not particularly active, but Norman's saying they might become active. Nobody signed up for those.
I'll take one of those.
I'll do the Pratt then.
I'll do Irvine Tadaro.
You'll do which one?
Irvine Tadaro.
Okay. Upper Trails Trail, both Orphan and Muriel were interested in that.
So, I am looking at the totals, and I'm happy not to do it.
Okay.
And even out the totals, and you've been doing it. I just was willing to do it.
Sure.
Happy to do it, but also happy to have you keep it.
Sure.
And the three of us are interested in Open Space Commission, so Amy, Orphan, and Shaijul. So, I'm happy to give one up.
I think we're going to have to settle that in the parking lot line.
And that one is, I think you are a member on that one, so you do have to go and count for quorum.
Okay.
So.
Who's doing that now?
Well, if Shaijul's going to be a voting member of the Elementary Building Committee, then probably better for Orphan. Can you do the Open Space?
Yep.
Then you're, you're not going to.
And do you want to continue on Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Or, yeah, your name says.
Yeah.
Metropolitan Airing Planning Commission. I have found that since, when I was working hybrid, it was very easy for me to attend the meetings, because I could just work, watch them at home, and then stay, work late at home, and it worked out fine. But now, I have to do it in the middle of my workday. So, I didn't know if Elaine might rather switch, and she would be the main member, and I'd be the alternate, or.
You can, the Select Board has a representative show, some member, always have to be.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just stay on it, and if I can't make it, I'll let you, is the alternate now?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. And then Metro West Regional Trans.
Yeah, so one-year term, and I'd be willing to do it for a second year if I get appointed.
Okay. So, should we count, redo our count here?
So, there's, you have seven, Mary Jo has 10.
What?
Orphan has nine. Liz, it's a, it's a willing bunch here. I have nine, and Shaijul has 12. So, I just, you know, if we finalize it, like, this is a great start. Maybe we get this in our packet, and then we just refine it next time. So that, I don't think anybody should, I think everybody should have an even level.
Yeah, yeah, it should all be split up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it should all be split up evenly. Also recognizing that some are heavier.
Yes, if it's a voting member, it's something else.
The elementary school billing committee is going to be big.
Yeah.
I'm thrilled to have you on it.
When that gets going.
I think the numbers missed some of my comments. I removed at least four, so it should be 10, but I'll check back.
Okay, so we should, we should finalize it.
Yeah, I'm only counting nine.
How many do we have in me? I only got eight.
Ready to do that. The, there's one one that is missing.
Counting one, two, three.
The Metro West Visions.
I'm counting 10.
Oh, I.
Which one did you take yourself off of? Which, what did you take yourself off of?
Okay, so we need to put that on the list, and then.
I didn't know I was on animal control. No, I wasn't. I don't know what's going to happen on this one.
Right, okay.
So I didn't count those.
Yep.
Okay.
Make something else.
Okay, so we'll look at a revised list next week.
Does that make sense? You have to, like, when it's settled, and then.
What's it?
I'd really like to see you do that.
Oh, yeah? Okay. But all of them, you want to do them.
I believe you.
What do you think?
Yeah, I know.[1662.52]